I always do. Okay, Keith Greenwood. SPI. You're muted, Keith. I see you talking.
Yeah, those get their reminder on your screen that get in the way of touching a button. So anyway, Keith Green with Sierra Pacific Industries in Weaverville. And I hate to do the meeting faux pas with so many high powered people in the meeting.
That's all right. Thanks for being here, Keith. Larry Glass.
Yeah, Larry Glass representing Safe Alternatives for our Forest Environment and howdy Jim from South Fork Mountain.
Hello.
All right, Arnold Whitridge.
Here collaborative member, welcome Jim.
Thank you.
And Carol Fall.
Yeah, collaborative member mostly representing the North Lake area and I am so glad to see you, Jim. Thanks for taking over for Pat. He's really thrilled to have you there. Thank you.
Glad to be here.
All right, and I believe it was there anybody that I missed? Okay, I think that's, oh Jennifer Motta, I see you now.
You didn't, you didn't miss me in all fairness, I joined late. So Jennifer Motta, Field Manager, Reading BLM.
Excellent. Thank you for joining us, Jennifer. I think that's all of us and a couple of new arrivals in the room.
Terry and Diana Sheen.
All right, Terry and Diana Sheen, original collaborative members and happen to be my parents.
All in the family.
All in the family, that's right. All right, well.
Kelly, is this the first full collaborative meeting you've done in this space?
Yes, it is in this space.
For those who haven't used this space before, just quick housekeeping if that's okay?
Yes.
If you need restrooms, there's a men's and women's restroom that are right around the corner to the left. The third restroom is out of commission because we have a roof leak into the light, so please don't use that space because if you turn on the light. In any sort of emergency, the muster point is out in front of the building in the parking lot by Burger King. If that's not safe, you can go behind the building. We just had safety training yesterday, so it's fresh on. Where we're supposed to muster if we have to evacuate. Otherwise, there's water around the corner as well. Thank you for using the space. We don't use it enough.
Thank you, Mike. And yeah, thanks for offering up the space. We appreciate it. This is, I think, just about as many people as we're going to want to fit in this space. But it's, it's perfect because it really does. It's, it's been easy to manage for these hybrid meetings and we appreciate having the opportunity. So thank you, Mike, for, for hosting us.
Kelly?
Yes.
Real quick, I do need to get one more person to link. Monique, could you please forward the link to Matt Swanson, our local law enforcement officer? He's prepared to share the information, but I did not get the link. So I texted Monique 47 times, but she is not multitasking. So. God, Monique, where to be focused and.
Yes, no problem. Well, I'll turn it over to Jim.
All right, well, it looks like we're on schedule here. So. We're going to start off with a report from the Shasta Trinity. Is that you, Tara or?
Um, yeah, we can, I think that we would like to really dive into the meat of what we have to say when Ted MacArthur gets here as well. Closer to 10:45, but for some local updates and some things working on Kelly, I'm flexible and can do whatever you need me to do. Or we can go to Jen first if, if that would work, whatever you guys would like.
If you. Would, I mean, if you want to do some of the local sort of updates and hiring and things of that nature, I think we should start off there.
Absolutely. So it's nice to see everyone in person and for once I'm in the same places where you guys are having coffee and snacks all the time instead of watching from the screen and be like. So we have had some successes recently in hiring. We've picked up an additional archaeologist that is based out of Weaverville, but works for the South Fork Management Unit. So that's good. That increases our numbers in archaeology. We've also picked up two additional staff members for working with special uses. And there, that's, there's two more. And we've got another forester will be showing up this week. So I'm really excited about that, you know, forester on board. And our rec folks continue to, to trickle in. We have hit some. Some difficulties with our hiring for seasonals in fire. And want to make sure that all of you are available, are aware and tell your friends who may be interested. We have a direct hiring event coming up. February 14th and 15th in Reading. It's really rare for us to be able to do that, to be able to walk in with your application, somebody walking through the process and get hired on the spot. We never do that. But for fire positions, both temporary positions and permanent positions, there'll be a hiring event. And it's not just for Shasta Trinity, it's for the whole area. Though I tend to lean more towards the side of the Shasta Trinity. I mean, you know, we're looking to hire some people. So there's a good opportunity there. We've got flyers out at the high schools, both at Hayfork and in Weaverville, really just trying to get, get some more people on board and be great if they're local. Yes, sir.
The new archaeologist is, I think I remember last meeting you had already hired two new ones. So is this in addition to that?
It's the second one. The second one just got here. We do have a third one that's going out through. A group announcement. I've been, I've been really trying to work every possible angle with Rachel's support, every possible angle to get people. So we've got the two on board. And I'm, I've got through another group hiring announcement, we've got the, another one in the, in the. In the shoot. Yes, thank you. Thanks, Ryan. That's why you need a good deputy that can help you find words. Anyway, so we're going to get another one. So I'd guess up to three, which will definitely increase our capacity. Also, one of the special use folks we have has anthropology archaeology background. So I'm hoping he can help facilitate some of that arc work associated with our special uses stuff. So that's really good. We're, we've got a detail out. It looks like we're going to be able to get a fire fuels planner position filled on the South Fork Management Unit, a position we've been short a long time. We weren't, we weren't able to fill up permanently this last round of hiring, but we were looking good for getting somebody detailed in there, at least keep us going for the next four months or so. So that's going to be really important associated with the disaster supplemental. Disaster supplemental is probably the other big news. A lot of, a lot of. A lot of investments being made in those fire footprints where we sold the McFarland Timber sale, which was a post-fire restoration project. So we were excited about that. We sold that. December 27th. So that's being logged now. Also have an active, well.
Who's the purchaser?
Trinity River Lumber. So that, that was a really big thing for us and we're really getting a lot of our fuels work either into contracts or getting set to put them into contracts. In that August fire area as well as McFarland Monument River and those are the three, four. I think that's probably what's going on on our side. The both offices are open. We have had. The South Fork office is up and running better with more people getting trained on and getting the authority to sell firewood permits. So we've been only able to sell them three days a week and we're getting, we've just got somebody hired on board at the front desk that also has that ability. So we'll be back to selling wood permits five days a week in the very near future out of both offices. So that's exciting because I know how important that is to the communities.
All right, thank you, Terry. Any other questions for Tara?
Another one.
Yes, sir.
Firewood. I was just wondering, all those great piles of firewood you made, you know, last, last year, did they get taken? Did the community chew them up?
They're gone.
They're gone, huh?
Yeah.
There's, there's still some more up there. We were up there, we did a field trip there recently and they're kind of. They're not as neatly stacked as they were before. So you gotta work a little harder. So it's, I feel like I was the one cutting the wood because as the stack got lower and you had to bend over more, people were like, where's the new stack? You know, they moved to the less bending over. So we do have some more and I'm thinking we'll get that. Restacked. And then there's also under the disaster supplemental, similar to the, some of the stuff the Six Rivers does. We're looking at even potentially just getting some of that worked up and staging it somewhere closer to town.
Resource.
It was, yeah.
Glad, glad to hear it. I'm glad to hear that got, got hit as hard as it did. And we sure appreciate getting the fuels out of the woods.
Yeah, excellent.
We, we have a hand up from Carol Fall, but she had just taken a call. So I don't know if she's with her screen off. I suspect that she's not quite back yet. So we might have to wait on, on her question.
Okay. Okay. Any other for Tara? So how about Six Rivers? Anybody here want to give a local report? Six Rivers?
Or anybody on Zoom? First, general report out?
We also have Todd from the Shasta Trinity on the NRA piece.
Oh, okay. Todd, you have an update report for us?
I have a little bit we can share. Lots going on and, and I think everybody's very well aware of that. So I'll be a little bit more specific to your guys' footprint. And with a little bit of overlap, I'll talk about what's keeping us busy as well. So Trinity Camps, I won't go into the, the background information on that project. We did have a little visit in the woods and we discussed. Had quite a bit of correspondence since then. The update will be essentially that the, the initiation letter, which is kind of the internal letter that kickstarts a project off. Was basically submitted for signature. Meaning the, as the supervisor's office staff have done the review, done their tweaks. And we're looking to get that, that signed. It is an internal document. So the scoping is we're going to get the majority of that information. As far as specific prescriptions or footprint where we want to do these activities. And that should be coming up here pretty, pretty soon. If you guys recall, we've been talking about this initiation letter for, for quite a bit. So it's. Fairly thorough. We're not being pre-decisional by any means, but we have quite a bit of data from inventory that kind of tells us the story and what we might want to do for an action. One of the changes in that initiation letter from original was kind of the tentative signature for the final decision memo. We had that at, at September, we're kind of pushing that forward to July of this year. So. I can't make any promises on that, but we're definitely going to give it our best go. We all know there's a need and that need is immediate. So. Every campground in the National Recreation Area surrounding Trinity Lake is what we're proposing to do activities. It's a lot of, basically just a lot of thinning. Again, more details will come when that scoping document goes out to public. As part of that, the Trinity Center Airport. Was brought up. So the FAA has basically said the approach and takeoff are unsafe. We don't disagree with that one bit. But there, we kind of broke it up into two parts. There's south of Swift Creek and that's kind of immediately around the airport itself. We have an authorization letter that we're going to be submitting here pretty soon. The NEPA is already complete and it's a special uses type project. But it's maintenance as far as. All the specialists and of course what they're asking for, it's just kind of like mowing the lawn. So let's go ahead and do that. The other piece of it, which is north of Swift Creek is a little bit more complex. There's the campground of America there. And if we go and basically take the top off, take all the big trees, then the campground has an effect. So. That kind of got absorbed into the Trinity Campgrounds project. It's just shy of about 50 acres. It's not a big lift, but we're gonna, instead of two separate environmental documents, we're going to just kind of absorb that. Again, into the Trinity Campgrounds project. One of the things that has kind of been hanging out there, we haven't really resolved yet. You guys recall, we had Ashley Hawkins, a forest health protection pathologist, discuss some of the issues with heteropacidian. A pretty nasty root disease and some of the mitigation measures that we were proposing. The. Recommendation from policy is to use a boric compound on stump diameters, anything cut. At the stump that's three inches or greater, we're, we're to. Supposed to be applying this boric compound to prevent the spread of this root disease. That's kind of unpractical when you figure you about 300 of those on the acre, so to speak. So Ashley's still doing his research to figure out what is the biological stump diameter versus the political stump diameter. We don't want to be arbitrary, but we also want to be effective. So he's, he's working on that now and I'm sure we'll get it right up there pretty soon. So that, those are the kind of specific. Project related things for the National Recreation Area. But we do have a couple hiring updates as well. So like Tara was mentioning, they got a couple special uses. We, we were able to fill our special uses seat as well fairly recently. We got one new forester. We were hoping for three. I will take one. We got a new botanist. And unfortunately, we were trying to get an additional archaeologist that didn't pan out, but that doesn't mean we're going to stop trying. So to be continued there. And then what's keeping us busy? We're also dealing with disaster supplemental. Fires seem to. Boundaries don't matter. So yeah, the salt fire was what we dealt with last year or the year before. So we're looking to do, we got a couple million dollars for put into that project. We're currently burning piles on the daily, even in some of this nasty rain, just takes longer. And then of course. We all need money. So we're doing a bunch of grant writing right now for additional, additional funds for, in particular, a recent project that was signed and called Interstate Five. So it doesn't affect you guys directly by any means, but that's a 20,000 acre project that's got, got us pretty busy as well. With that, unless there's any questions, I believe that's. The pertinent information that I think you guys would want to, want to hear from the National Recreation Area.
Thank you.
Carol Fall, you have your hand up?
Yeah, I apologize. I actually had a question for Tara earlier, but. All these contractors here at the fire station. So it's just kind of nuts. So I wanted to ask Tara whether or not the direct hiring event on the 14th and 15th is just fire related? Or if it would also be other seasonal positions?
It's, it's just fire related. You know, it's, you asked a very good question. It's a question we all asked as well. Like, well, how can, how can we hire other people in this event? But for this, for this purpose, it's, it's fire related.
Okay, thanks. And then. Yeah, I look forward to seeing Todd. I guess next week at the Fire Safe Council, you're going to be bringing maps so that we can really figure out. All, how all the different North Lake projects kind of mesh together.
Yeah, there's, hopefully you guys got some of the shape files. You can kind of see some of that already. But yeah, it's a good idea. What is actually going on across this landscape? There, there's quite a bit and different groups. So.
Yeah, there's a lot, a lot of different projects. So I'm just, yeah, that's great. Okay. See you next week. Thank you.
Cool. Yeah.
All right. Any other questions for Todd?
Todd, a quick question on the 20,000 acres. Is that, what type of activities are being proposed on those 20,000 acres?
Most of the mechanical is going to be mastication on ridges. This is basically a. Fire restoration project. So a lot of manual. Thinning, piling, burning, and then a lot of broadcast as well. We have the interstate Union Pacific Railroad, 110 KV transmission lines, a bunch of developed rec sites. So we're, and the communities, right? That's O'Brien communities in the area and we have a bunch of rec residences and so forth. So it's get the structure. Ready to apply fire as a process and changing that structure, all I'm talking about is basically reducing stand density. No product removal. Unfortunately, under this project, it's a fairly old one. Really wish we could. Have like a biomass, if anything, type removal, but that's not. We didn't really have heavy equipment for a lot of the areas. It's pretty steep ground too. But fire restoration in a very complex community.
Right. Any other?
Any movement on the trail around the lake? I've been sitting here for 10 years waiting for some movement and I'm getting really old.
Yeah, I wouldn't be able to speak to the details of that because I have not heard anything new, except that there is a. Caltrans says to do something and we can't do that for, I don't, I don't know the specifics, but I know that there's a discussion. On, if there's a culvert in one location and do we walk around that culvert and go walk it next to the road or? Do we redo the culvert and who's responsible?
I want to stop the, the. The trail around that area that's being controlled by Caltrans and address that later. So just stop the trail. And so I can go build the trail. It's only a mile of trail up to that, that area and then start it again. But that seems real reasonable to me. What's it seem like to you?
I, I think we all want trails to be contiguous. So I don't know stopping it right there. If it's just you want the trail cleared out, I'm not sure what is needed if it's.
If I can help a little bit there. So I think Ross, I think what we're doing is we're waiting for the. Watershed Center to find out if they got the conservancy grant for promoting recreation in the North Lake. That would be able to cover. You know, some of the. Questions about the trail. So I don't know if the Watershed Center knows if they got that grant or not.
We don't yet, but it'll have a bunch of planning money. We're looking at.
We're waiting for Caltrans to make their decision on it. So stop the park that, that's across from.
Waiting for that study date, that study, some of that, some of that input from the, the conservancy grant study planning.
Yeah, as far as, my understanding is that Caltrans is, has a concern with the engineering and having any kind of cut bank. Oh, on the, on the, on the toe side of the, of the cut bank that's above the culvert. So they want to see it engineered. And I think that's what we had, had wanted to see happen with some of the funding from that grant.
Right. Have the geologists do some of that work.
Just, just stop the area that Caltrans is concerned about and just wait for them to make the decision. But to start to building the trail on the first, on the first mile of trail. This trail is going to be over 100 miles long. And it's taken 10 years. We don't have the first inch of trail built yet. And. I'm not going to last that long. You know, so I would like to stop the, the area across from the Stony Creek and, and start it, you know, it's only. 100 feet we're talking about. And so we'll use the road as we do at various places along the trail. We do use Highway Three and we have the right to use it. We have the right to use the trail, the highway. And I'd like to see something get done.
I will definitely relay that to the boss and, and see where that fits with. The, the priorities of everything else and how, how we can make that work. But I like the recommendation and I'll definitely forward that on.
All right, thank you, Todd.
Real quick, I just wanted to mention that since we started, there's been a few more people that joined on Zoom. Bob Morris with the Collaborative. Carrie Otto from Shasta Training International Forest, Matt Swanson from Shasta Training International Forest. And Xander Winter from the Watershed Research and Training Center have also joined us. So.
Very good. Welcome. Okay, are we done? I know we'll circle back here when Ted shows up. But are we ready to move on to our BLM update?
Is your 11 o'clock a hard, hard 11 o'clock? That was my, my understanding was that.
No, we, no, we, we can stay whenever Ted's arrives.
Okay.
Yeah. Just to that other meeting.
Okay, okay. Fantastic.
Very good. Thanks.
Yeah.
Okay, Jennifer, you ready to give your report?
Sure. So a few things for those of you in the area, I'm sure you have seen our smoke from all of our pile burning that's been happening. So we have been burning piles in the Indian Creek area as well, out in Lewiston from our fuels production. So that will. Continue on until we get those piles finished. Can't give enough credit to our fire and fuel staff who has been out there. In the pouring rain and the snow, burning piles almost every day of the kind of winter season. So it's, you know, a thankless task to be out there doing that. So happy to have them out in the field. We're continuing work on our Trinity Rec EA so that is the EA that looks at. Some campground improvements while making a campground improvement out of Steiner Flat. And then doing some other work in our rec facilities in Trinity County as well as actually one rec facility in Shasta. So. Continue to work on that. I do think that part of that will include a firewood sale from the trees that will thin out of the campgrounds as a result. We did sign the digital 299 fiber optic NEPA document, at least the BLM piece. I can't speak to the other entities. So that was signed. So that project will move forward pending the signatures by the other agencies. Our statewide fuels programmatic EA document, public comment ended on that. And so we're back at the state office. Working internally to look at the public comment review. So I assume another draft EA will come out at some point in the near future. Our RMP, we are still working on alternatives internal to the field office at this point. And so that is basically what's taking up a good majority of our time. We should see, the goal is to have a draft. EIS out to the public in September. So that's the, the goal we look forward to at this point. And then as far as personnel goes, everything is basically the same in the office with the exception of Heidi Rogers, our forester. She's on. Detail actually to our state office as the state forester for BLM. So we have another forester that's filling in behind her, but that's really kind of the only change at this point. I think that's it unless there's any questions. I do have to leave at 11. I'm helping our state office with some reviews this morning.
All right. Thank you, Tom.
Jennifer, I'm, I'm really concerned between, well, almost all the low elevation between Douglas City and Weaverville, even stretching up. All the way over into Grass Valley Creek. We are inundated with dying dead trees, both pine and Douglas fir. And a lot of it's on BLM and nothing has been done since this started. And I'm wondering why nothing's being done and if anything is planned to be done because. I'm estimating there's probably 10,000 trees along there on BLM property that have died and nothing done with them. So what's going on there?
And so I'd have to ask our foresters specifically, I do know that they're aware and cognizant of the problem. My guess is that even if they have something planned, really it comes down to a capacity issue for us. I mean, at this point I have one forester and the majority of the rest of my staff is tied into the resource management plan. But I can follow up, Tom, and ask kind of if, I know they've looked at the, the issue, but I can follow up and get back to you guys.
Is that something, Jennifer, we could probably agendize maybe for upcoming meeting and have one of your foresters prepare to give us an update on that?
Sure. I don't know how much of a lengthy topic it will be, but we can for sure add it to the agenda and have them on.
Sure. Could I make a recommendation on that? Essentially, that's an item that spans public, private land, you know, national forest system, BLM and private land. So if we want to talk about, you know, the sort of. Drought related mortality that's sort of spiraling out of Rust County and that's evidenced by, you know, the cooperative, you know. Survey that the beds and state do as well.
Maybe a little broader than just.
Yeah, just a broader topic. So why not make it a broader topic? Just, it'd be great if the agencies could speak individually about, you know. What they are doing, what tools and authorities, what capacity limitation they're sort of getting in the way. And maybe we could even talk about what we could do or are trying to do with private landowners as well. Make it a broader topic. Is that, is that okay, Tom?
Jennifer, is there, I mean. Is there even a firewood program going on saying this area right here is available for firewood on BLM or anything like that?
Yeah, we do make areas available for firewood. So we could look at that as an option if, you know. If we think that will help, but we do issue firewood permits. I know we've done a lot with the trees that were like around Union Hill Pond that were dying off. We've issued some permits there for people. We just normally don't get that high of a demand, quite frankly, for firewood permits.
Any other questions for Jennifer?
I would make one other comment that I've had some people. I do, I would make one other comment that I've had some people approach me. Um, actually, with regard to the collaborative itself, there, there are also. Just general issues with Caltrans and how much, you know, like how many hazard trees are being dropped along the highways and then just left. And so um, um, and this is, I mean, it's kind of a little bit of a different subject, but uh, one of the things that I might inquire with Caltrans about is to give us a report out about what they intend to do with all that. Uh, all that biomass.
Kind of include that in this broader.
Yeah, I think, I think it could be included.
All right, very good. One last call for Jennifer.
So who's gonna reach out to Caltrans?
I can do that.
Sounds like Kelly was volunteering to do that.
Yep.
All right.
Yep.
Thank you, Jennifer.
Thank you.
Okay, it looks like we are on the HUD rap project thing.
Sure, Kelly, on.
I need to uh.
Ted to give us any update on Six Rivers things? We're waiting for Ted. I'm sorry, I wasn't sure.
I think we're waiting.
Um, yeah, it is.
Or is there somebody from Six Rivers that's available? I think I asked that question. I don't know that we got a response.
You know, he's there.
Yeah, this is Ted from, from the Mad River District.
Okay.
I do believe Ted should be with us in the next few minutes.
Right, we'll circle back as Ken Saki would famously say.
This, this is likely to be a little bit of a, an item, right?
It's, uh, I think there's maybe ten slides and there's a video maybe to show afterwards. Yeah, it's only two things on there. So open up PowerPoint first, I guess. And I know there's a ton of people in this meeting that know a lot about this, but I'm gonna, I'm gonna start with a little background. I didn't want to presume that everybody here or on the call. Would have all the rap background, so it's gonna go. A little bit of history here, but it's not, it's not that long.
Just one second, let me get this.
Is everybody on Zoom seeing this now?
Yes.
Yeah, you can go right to the next one. Yeah, so to this, this slide's a little background on basically why we decided, I say we, the Trinity PUD decided to pursue the rap project. And folks probably remember the August twenty seventeen to lead a fire approximately twenty-two thousand acres, seventy-two structures burned. You know, the real huge issue for us is as a result of that fire, we, we faced a hundred and thirty-eight million in claims against the utility. Um, approximately sixty-two million of that was federal government. That's consolidated, um. You know, the fire service was the lead, but uh, they got assistance from uh, Cal Fire. That's all wrapped up sixty-two million of those claim. The dollars of that hundred thirty-eight million was. On the other way. Was for suppression and timber value. But that piece of property is actually BLM land too, I might add, but um, that next bullet there is, is the real kicker for utilities in California. Um, California has a strict liability standard that um. Can leave utilities on the hook even were not at fault. I, I like to give a, an extreme example, but this is accurate. Um, if you suppose that a uh, drunk driver was driving down Highway two ninety-nine, passed out behind the wheel, swerved off the road. Hit a PUD power pole, knocked it on the ground, and let's say that's a hundred million dollar fire. The PUD could be on the hook for the entire hundred million. And I know that sounds bizarre and completely unrealistic. But it's completely accurate. Uh, California only in the union that has a, a strict liability standard like this. That background is important because if you look further down their legal settlement, at the time we had wildfire liability insurance, our policy limits were ten million. And we settled a hundred and thirty-eight million in claims for ten million dollars. Um, but as a result of that, we are now self-insured. So. The game has changed.
Early or just nobody?
We cannot get insurance. Um, no one, um, you know, what's happening in the insurance market is the reinsurance markets, um, the big players. Um, you know, like Berkshire Hathaway, um, they've completely left wildfire liability insurance. Um. A lot of folks are losing wildfire liability insurance that don't have, uh, that haven't had a fire like us. And if you've had one, you're done. And when I say you can't get insurance, you know, we could probably get that ten million in insurance from uh, Lloyd's of London, but it would cost us five million a year. So there's no realistic insurance market for wildfire liability in California anymore. And until the strict liability standard is um, fixed, repealed, changed, there's not going to be one. Um, a little bit of background on Trinity PUD system. Um, we serve about eighty-five percent of the population of the county, you know, the, down the general areas I mentioned. Serve our uh, South County and uh, what I'd call Far Down River Burnt Ranch, you know, Mad River, we don't serve those areas. But our uh, of the county, we, our service territory is twenty-two hundred square miles, six hundred and five miles of power line right away. Uh, right now, our, our easement, our standard easement is twenty feet wide, ten feet from center line. And what'll really show the inadequacy of this is the video that Kelly can tee up at the end, but. Everybody knows this is some pretty rugged terrain. Uh, fifty percent of our right of ways on federally managed land, majority of that on fire service, but good piece on BLM, a tiny amount on Bureau of Reclamation. And almost all of our service territory is in what Cal Fire designates as a very high hazard severity zone. Matter of fact, the little bit that wasn't in very high severity, Cal Fire's in the process of updating their maps. I think we saw thirteen percent increase. And what um, in our area of what's moved into very high severity. So we, we had to, obviously, um, you know, I just remember the, the firewood permits, you know, ten years ago I cut firewood too. You really had to look around to find some dead trees, right? Well, now.
Yeah.
The idea of, of firewood sale, I think is pretty tough because you're tripping over dead trees everywhere you go. Now it's really easy. That coupled with just the evolution in fire behavior, the fact that we are self-insured means we, we had to take a really different approach. And we, the, the idea was what's the most cost-effective way to um, alleviate the highest amount of risk? And that's, that's kind of the evolution of, of the rap project. You see that last bullet there? I get that question all the time. It's very natural from a layman's standpoint. So why don't you just put all underground? Six hundred million is probably a really conservative low number of what it would cost to underground. Um, so to put that in perspective, our annual budget is fifteen million dollars. As a result of our issues, um, it's been forced to downgrade from a triple B plus to a double B plus. There is no universe in which we can borrow anywhere near six hundred billion dollars. So it's, it's an impossibility. You know, could a little bit of underground be done in strategic areas? Certainly, um, you know, probably requires federal grants, but just kind of talk about that a little bit. Next slide. This is a picture of the right of, of one, there'll be a couple here. Um, the video is really gonna show it better. You can skip to the next one, Kelly. This is some of the survey work done, but especially that one on the left gives you an idea of, of what we're talking about. I know a lot of folks on, in this meeting have been out in the woods. So when you're talking a hundred and fifty or two hundred foot tall trees and ten feet from center line, it's, it's just woefully inadequate. Um, the other thing I might mention is statistically, we, we have the same number of fire starts that we had thirty years ago. The consequences are just, are fuel densities way higher, climate's drier. It, it just, it just was a different approach. So maybe skip to the next.
Now, those right of ways, though, I imagine when they were first put in place, really didn't have wildfire mitigation as part of kind of the concept, right? It was just a maintenance, right? Just whatever was required to get in there and do whatever repair work you needed, right? So, I mean, it has to be revisited, right, in terms of the functionality of that right away?
Yes, yeah. And, and that's, that's really what we're talking about here. I mean, there's obviously forest service and BLM folks here, you know, my, talking to my peers of twenty-foot easement is pretty standard across forest service, right? So it's not like we have anything unusual here. It's just, we gotta reevaluate, you know, if there's a new normal.
Um, Paul, Paul is, there is, there are, you can go beyond the twenty foot for risk trees.
For danger trees, we go outside the easement and the same will be true of the new easement. But as, as you could see from looking at those pictures of that right away, even with healthy trees, um, you know, the, the consequences of a fire start now are just incredibly severe. Up to including bankruptcy to utility because of California strict liability standard.
Underground.
Yeah.
Would be solved a lot of that.
Yeah.
Hundred million to do that.
It's probably, probably a low number, yeah.
When do you get started?
We don't plan without getting some great money. Rate impact would just be catastrophic. We, we couldn't even borrow the money.
Then where to start?
Yeah.
I guess around towns.
Well, actually, we'd go to our, our risk areas, you know, our lower risk areas are in places like Weaverville or Hayfork. It's, yeah. Federally managed grant is the highest risk. These are some pictures of uh, fire that folks might recognize. You can skip to the next. So one of the keys to the project, um, and, and um, we recently had a, a over twenty-two hour outage. For the majority of our system and anybody lives in Weaverville, Douglas City or Hayfork knows this. I see some heads nodding. The Western Air Power Administration, we are dependent on a radial sixty KV line. When I say radial, it's not looped. You know, the um, analogy is it's a big extension cord that runs from the dam into the little substation just outside on the reading side of Weaverville. From there it ties to our sixty KV that we use to serve our Mill Street Substation here. And Weaverville, that also serves Junction City. Our sixty KV line runs from there to Douglas City and then to Hayfork. So it serves those areas actually on the way to Weaverville. It also serves our Lewiston Substation. So the vast majority of our load is dependent. Uh, Trinity Center can actually be served directly out of off the substation at the dam. With the twenty-one KV line, but that wood pole transmission line is obviously critical um, to our load. Only hospital, you know, almost all the emergency services depend on it. And so in the early stages, we talked to Western Air Power Administration about this and they agreed to be the lead agency for this project. Now the project's more than two hundred miles. That line is, you know, seventeen and a half miles long, but that ratio doesn't. Probably convey the impact of, of that line. Their right away is eighty feet wide, um, but they're also looking to increase it to hundred and thirty feet. You can go to the next slide. Kind of the foundation, the start for this was a, a paper done by the US Forest Service in twenty fourteen. And it's um, it's vegetation, it's, it's the recommended uh, clearance from wood pole lines in order to protect them from forest fires. WAPA early on, it's um, modeling and, you know, what, what's the benefit? What's the projected benefit of going in their case from an eighty foot wide right away to a hundred and thirty feet? And they saw more than an eighty percent reduction in tree-to-wire contacts. And this is pretty intuitive, right? Obviously the wider that right away. Um, as tall as our trees are, a hundred and thirty feet wide, sixty-five feet from center line, if you will, doesn't prevent all tree-to-wire contacts, but it goes a long way. It's, we've subsequently done some modeling as well, and we think we're gonna see a ninety-five percent reduction in tree-to-wire contacts. And if you think about it, that makes intuitive sense too, because our right of way is twenty feet wide. And, you know, I've gotten questions before, well, um, you know, that's a sixty KV line, they're a hundred and thirty feet. Why are you with twelve KV or twenty-one KV? Why are you going to a hundred and thirty feet? And from an electrical utility operational standpoint, it certainly makes sense to have wider rights away for higher voltage lines because there's greater operational impact, more people lose power. But from a fire standpoint, there's no difference between a twelve KV line and a sixty KV line. Tree falls on it, sparks fall to the ground and a fire might start. And it's just, i- it's another way of thinking about. You know, when fire safety is your predominant issue, it's just a different way of thinking about uh, right away management. Um, you can go to the next slide. Yeah, th- this is a map and a list of the areas. I know at that scale, um, it's hard to see, but it's a, it's a, it's a big project, certainly for utility, our size. You can skip to the next one. So here, here's some, we hope to have the draft EISEI out in April of this year for comment. We've involved a lot of agencies and, and I, I feel we've gotten great support from them. Um, you know, so I'd like to make that recognition. In terms of, you know, once we have the ability to start, um, it's about twenty-four hundred acres total. Um, if we could treat six hundred acres per year, I'll admit that's a, that's pretty aggressive. In order to do that, we're gonna have to get some grant funding, though we do have some optimism on that, or Cal Fire grants or FEMA grants. Um, they're the total cost, we think, is fifteen million dollars. Um, and the ongoing cost increase. Um, actually, I haven't updated this slide. I think, um, I think the ongoing right away maintenance cost is probably about four hundred and eighty thousand dollars a year. So that has a rate impact, obviously, but if you compare that to um, well, a twenty-two thousand acre fire. Only one fire obviously dwarfs all these costs. And that's why undertaking a project like this is, you know, the board decided to do it. The next slide.
So Paul, when you released the document in April, what agencies would have already reviewed it and given you feedback prior to the publication?
Oh, uh, the Forest Service, uh, BLM, uh, Bureau of Reclamation, Fish and Wildlife, NIMS.
So you've been through the middle?
Yes, oh yes. Oh, we, we've been through, yeah, multiple rounds of reviews. Yeah, so, so that everybody knows too, I probably should have put that in a slide. We've already, we released this a couple of years ago for initial comments and those comments have been incorporated. And of course, since all the surveys, everything's been done and it's been through multiple rounds of these agency reviews. And so we're gonna release that hopefully in April for public comment. Some of this is repetitive, I guess. Um, well, so i- it's, it's important to think about all of the benefits of the project. So I mentioned our earlier slide, tree-to-wire contacts. And from a liability standpoint, that's absolutely huge. But another benefit I like to mention to folks is, you know, this is gonna be a linear feature on the ground. That I think has real firefighting, community protection benefits. Um, a hundred and thirty-foot easement. Can serve as a fire break or um, an asset for fire personnel um, to launch uh, protective measures from where our, you saw the pictures, our twenty-foot easement is, is worthless in that regard. Um, so I don't, I, I think. More than just protecting um, the solvency of the utility, which I hope is important to everybody in Trinity County. Um, it is a fire protection asset. I think that uh, the utility is gonna maintain in perpetuity, or certainly that's the goal. Um, you see those other benefits there. Reliability, I remind you again of that twenty-two hour outage. Um, prior to that, in twenty eighteen with the car fire, I'm sure there's a lot of folks here, remember, we had eight system-wide outages over uh, eleven days. This will have helped at least with a portion of that. Um, some of that was a sixty KV line, some of it was actually the two thirty line that, that fire went, obviously was much bigger in Shasta County. And WAPA lost their two thirty line. We islanded off of the power plant. But we don't have the ability to out, to island off a Trinity Power Plant without that sixty KV line. Um, you know, health and safety and biologics. You, you skip. I mentioned this a little earlier, some of the sources for potential grant funding that we hope to utilize and we think we're gonna be competitive. You can go to the next one. And what may be before questions, why don't you tee up that video? It's, it's not long. This is one we, we showed at a, a board meeting in December and. And it's, it's got some area from Helena, it's from Buckhorn Steel Bridge, Fiddle. You'll see dead tree issues, you'll get a real flavor for the right-of-way. There's even a snow outage drone flying. This is drone video. I like to call this the tree tunnel. See, we're 10 foot from center line, just doesn't get you a lot, not when the trees are that large. And this is not at all atypical of our service territory. Truck down there on the roads, you got flying the drone.
Feels like a zip line. A little bit slower.
This is a zip line at 12,000 volts.
Is this proposal both public and private land?
It is, yeah. I didn't put it in a slide. The rough numbers are, they're, it's 220 miles roughly, or that's approximate. Seventeen and a half of that is WAPA. We have, I think, 86 miles of this on Forest Service, approximately 26 miles on BLM, 123 miles on private land, obviously, majority of that is SBI, little less than a mile on VOR, Bureau of Reclamation. It's going to leave this area in a minute. You'll get a expansive view that I think shows the dead tree problem that everybody knows we have now. It's just exacerbating this issue.
Sorry, when did, when was this video shot?
Well, it's shot at different times. Is, some of it was this past summer, some of it was this past December in a snowstorm. So it kind of rained, that's the range, but all very recent. Imagine trying to prevent all tree-to-power line contacts in that situation there.
So all those trees, even though they're right next to the line, they're not considered hazard trees unless?
They're not dead or, yeah, or dying, leaning over the line, yeah. Yeah, just, just, we've dramatically ramped up our dead tree removal stuff as a necessity. So the budget's really increasing there. Yeah, and this, this, you get a feel for the dead tree issue pretty well in this. And those things, I'm guessing 200 feet taller is better experts than me here, but.
So Paul, when you talked about the dead trees and the right-of-way that you have and the land that your right-of-way exists on, are you saying that you can only remove dead trees within that 10-foot right-of-way?
No, no, we can go outside the easement for hazard trees, and we do.
So dead is?
Yeah, if it's dead, it's a hazard.
And how far outside can you go?
Anything that's a hazard to the law. Yeah.
That's a lot of falling. Can you, can you hire anybody to go follow those trees for you?
No, they have to be line clearance certified. Our cost to do it or more. Though we're experimenting with some other ones. This one's interesting too. So this is a flight during a drought, just a buckling area to be on the ground. And you'll see the oak tree that's on the line, that the drone operator finds it. But you have to look quickly, but you'll notice how far outside the easement it was. And if you really look, you'll see that there are some tree leaves still on the tree. So this was not a dead oak that fell on the line. And it just kind of gives you, obviously, this is not high-fire hazard time, but that same tree falling in the summer could have been the 100,000-acre fire, 100,000-dollar fire.
But this is the reliability issue.
It is, it is. It is. So in the distance is the, okay, he's zooming in on, he's already seen it. That lower portion there, you can see leaves on the tree. Which, in case to me, it wasn't dead. And you look to your left and you see how far outside the easement it is. This is, this is just to go for red capabilities, we're able to look at equipment and spot hot areas that might be a source of potential failure before they fail. So it's just, some of the drones have infrared camera capability, and this is just to demonstrate that. But that's, that's pretty much it, I think. I think it's over. If there's any question.
Thank you, Paul. Any questions?
What, um, within the expanded easement, is it just going to be bare earth? Is that?
Well, so the treatments, you know, I don't want to get ahead of the release, but it will vary depending on where it's at. So in repairing areas, I think the plan would only be to remove large trees that could fall on the power lines and no other vegetation. You know, I guess the one extreme end is where we're spanning a canyon and the tops of the trees are all below our lines. We wouldn't remove anything. You know, we don't want to increase our expense or remove trees unnecessarily. But the idea is to take out anything that could fall on the line within that 130 feet.
It's a lot of fall.
It is. It's, it's 2,400 acres. I mean, that's, that's the way to look at it now. And it's intuitive. A lot of that is, there's actually some really good timber in places. In other areas, there's none. Yeah, I know, we've, we've been accused in the first round of comments that, you know, this was a logging project. Well, if it was, it would be the worst logging project history, because we're going to lose millions on it, but.
Are there other plans for accessing these timbers to get them out? I mean, there's some incredible country there.
Yeah, so that's, that's gonna, that's gonna affect everything, you know, the, the ability to get the trees out obviously affects the value. But keep in mind, we have access to our power lines everywhere, some places better than others. So, so access does, at least some level of access.
All right. Thank you, Paul.
Sure.
All right, we have a new guest.
I have some questions.
Oh, Carol.
Okay. Sorry. So I just wondered, in the EISEIR, alternatives to potentially removing a lot of trees, did they look, are they going to be looking at shaded fuel break or undergrounding and the relative costs of those for maybe some areas? Like, you know, would it be better to underground some areas and do the other kind of treatment in others? Is there a mix of alternatives, or is it just like A, B, C? You can have undergrounding, you can have clear cutting, you can have shaded fuel breaks and never the twain shall meet? How does, how does that alternative evaluation work?
So, so undergrounding is certainly analyzed as an alternative. When you say shaded fuel break, I'm not sure exactly what you mean by shaded fuel break. I mean, removing the trees that could fall on the line could be considered a shaded fuel break. You remind me, when we, when we first kicked this thing off, this was before Rachel was the forest supervisor, Scott, what was Scott's last name?
Russell.
Russell. I remember the first meeting and we, we proposed 130 feet. I remember his response was, well, I don't think that's wide enough. I think any 600 feet. I almost fell out of the chair. But his idea was kind of what you talk about, Carol, that, you know, you know, the 130 feet, you're much more intensive in your removal efforts, and then you.
Right. Right.
Right. Some of that is being analyzed, but I can tell you just from, there's a diminishing returns from a utility standpoint. I mean, kind of the way I view this is, we're going to manage the forest, at least in the immediate proximity to our power lines. But we don't, we don't have the resources to do that on a huge scale, right? And the difference between 130 feet and 600 or, you know, any bigger number, it starts to get really expensive really quickly. And there's diminishing returns. You know, the cost to eliminate any tree-to-wire contact is just too large, right? So at 130 feet, we think we're a 95% reduction in tree-to-wire contacts. We think that is the sweet spot. But in terms of those alternatives, I think what we're doing now is, you know, maybe a shaded fuel break or the start of one, and certainly undergrounding is being analyzed. So, and you'll, you'll see that when it's released.
Well, and then I guess it's a second question. So on, on the private lands, if a private landowner chooses not to do this treatment, who's liable? A tree falls on the line, is it the BUD or the private landowner?
That, that's a great question, Carol. So, you know, one thing I will mention, on private property, you know, we've committed, we're, we're not going to do, pursue any treatment that private property owner doesn't agree to. But the liability issue, I don't know how to answer that question. Certainly, the utility has liability, but I'm not sure that the private property owner might also not have some liability. So I, I don't know the answer to that. And I don't know that there's sufficient court cases to really be definitive with an answer on that.
Okay. Well, thank you very much.
Sure.
Okay, any other questions for Paul? Seeing none, we will circle back to the Forest Service. Ted, welcome.
Thanks.
I have a question. I'm sorry, I had to run and unmute myself, Diane Richards. Um, this would be for Paul. Possibly, could there be a partnership to expand? You do the 130 feet, and then the 600 feet would be taken over by the Forest Service in a shaded fuel break beyond? Because you'd have the equipment up there, and maybe you can partner to do that rather than taking on the whole expense. If you've got the EIR or EIS, whatever is going to happen with this, maybe it could expedite doing a shaded fuel break on the 600 feet or whatever beyond the 130. Have you considered that? Thank you.
Well, I can just, off the top of my head, I can tell you I love the idea. If the Forest Service wanted to kind of piggyback on this project, in BLM for that matter, and do a shaded fuel break. In terms of capitalizing on the work we've done, we studied a 250-foot wide swath. So in, in terms of NEPA work necessary to expand, if you will, and the shaded fuel break you described, the work hasn't been done to go all the way to 600 feet, but it could certainly go further than, than we're going now. And the reason we did 250 feet is we wanted the flexibility to move that easement, move that power line within the easement, if you will. Where there's high, you know, a high slope or steep slopes, we might only want, you know, 20 feet on the downhill side as an easement. And we might want 110 feet on the uphill side, you know, on flat ground, which we don't have much of. It makes sense to center it in the easement. But that's why we studied a 250-foot swath to give us that flexibility. When you have a 20-foot easement, it's irrelevant. You're not going to move the line within that tiny easement. There's just no benefit there. But when you get to larger easements, there's, with our topography, there's obviously benefits in shifting that easement in relationship to the power line, you know, because downhill stuff on steep slopes, you know, tops, you don't get far from the line. The tops of the trees are below it. So, but not a perfect answer, but I guess there's some possibility, given the studies that we've done.
So I'm, I'm wondering if the collaborative would be interested in, look. I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Am I unmuted now? My bad finger. Okay, I was wondering if the collaborative would be interested in looking into partnering to recommend a partnership to, with this 250 feet at least, that has been already studied, that's better than just the 130. And it would begin a, a real partnership, which maybe would be, you know, rubber stamped across all the forests here in California. Maybe we could lead on that. And I, I like the idea of the shaded fuel break on the outside of the 130. So I'm wondering if we could either put it on the agenda or someone could propose it, or do I have to? Thank you.
Any comments on Diane's proposal?
It seems like the agencies would have to start that as a program of work. And I don't know if that's even in the agenda at all for them.
So what we are doing is, the agency is really starting to look at planning efforts on a much, much larger basis. And one of the things we look at are what infrastructure is present within that planning area. For instance, the Big Ranch Project, and when we went out and looked at Browns. So we're really paying attention to where the power lines are. But realize, you know, there, there are some, some trade-offs, right? If you, if you cut a lot of trees in a certain area, you, you have to account for that canopy loss sometimes in wildlife-heavy areas. But that, that approach and looking at the infrastructure that's present on the landscape is definitely something we're factoring in. Your landscape analysis areas, and whether it's roads or power lines, regardless of who owns those power lines, we're, we're making sure that we factor that in. And that's, that's stuff we've talked about on our collaborative field trips out in the woods. And it's things that we'll continue to focus on and talk about when we're out in the woods, looking at what right looks like. It will be a little bit of a dance, kind of trying to thread the needle after the, you know, we have to look at the impacts of what the, this proposal will have on the landscape, and then that will impact our planning efforts. But certainly being, being in sync and being strategic, it's, it's definitely a good time to have those conversations, Diane, and to look at things on maps like Carol has been pushing for and, and have, have the treatments complement each other, whether it's on Forest Service, on BLM, or on private. So those are, those are, your timing is perfect. It's a really good idea, and, and those are the same things that we're thinking about doing.
Keith Greenwood?
Yeah, just that, you know, the straight line is a good way to transmit and string wire, but it's not always the best place to fight fire from going up and down the hill. So it's not always the best place to have, spend your money on building a fuel break. If you're putting one in, I like what Tara said, let's find the best place to put it and then put our money there.
Okay, anything else? You got any hands up?
That was, that was the one that we had.
Okay, all good comments. Paul, thank you again for your, your presentation.
Thanks, Paul.
Okay, we're going to try this one more time, circling back to the Forest Service presentation. So Ted, Rachel, Tara, who wants to fire away?
Well, we've got a PowerPoint. Is it possible to pull that up?
If you have it on.
I, I, it was attached to the email I sent you.
Oh, it was? Okay. I'm sorry, I didn't actually, I didn't catch that.
Right.
I was, I was literally responding. One minute to read it this morning.
That's cold.
So while he's pulling that up, does anyone want to kind of?
Tee it up.
Tee it up. There we go. I like that.
I don't think you've even had a chance to introduce yourself.
There you go, Ted.
Not most of you here, but Ted McCarthy, I'm the forest supervisor on Six Rivers. Hope to make out more in person and maybe on time on occasion. We'll see.
Yesterday?
No.
Ted, you missed my introduction, but my name is Jim Spear. I'm Pat Pross' replacement.
Your, yeah, your address.
Okay.
Have access to that.
I need to, I might have a general.
Yeah, I can, I can give you a quick general update on the, on the Six Rivers.
Very good.
Some of the stuff that we have underway, I think, as you may know, we did sign the August post-fire.
So that, that decision has been signed, and we're going to be working on implementation here. Near future. The other project that will be coming out, the draft decision's going to be coming out really soon is our, and I'm really excited about this one, is our forest-wide fire and fuels document, where we're going to be looking at managing for prescribed burning and fuels management across the Six Rivers. And what that document is, is looking to authorize is RX burning and mechanical treatment up to 12 inches to, to provide opportunities for managing fire. So, so, I mean, we're talking about RX burns, but if you think about the types of treatments we're looking to do on that small diameter. if you think about, uh, the types of treatments we're we're looking to do on that small diameter stuff is is how do we put features out there that enhance our ability to manage fire regardless of the target. The focus is creating a mechanism for us to burn at the scale that we need to, where, as an example, we have some units around Hill Creek that are, you know, thousand-plus acre burn units that are have natural control features around them, and that'll allow us to burn at that larger scale, take less people, less risk, because we don't have to put features in at areas that are harder to control. It's kind of the the intent of that larger scale, uh, project. And and I'm I'm anxious to get that decision signed and and start implementing that here in the near future as well. I think those are kind of the big picture items, other than what we're going to be talking about today, that are Six Rivers specific.
Very good.
So a question on that. So the the idea then is to use some type of mechanical treatment to prepare the burn edge dip it or mechanically treat it in some way to prepare the edge, and then you bite, you're biting off that prepared head thinking that you have, uh, something that you can control or back away from it.
That's correct. It's not. So there's no, there's no road construction or infrastructure developments, all using existing infrastructure. We have the consultation mostly with the the listing of the mark that's that's kind of thrown a little key about updated. Other than that, we already have a pro programmatic consultation with US Fish and Wildlife that to this type of work. The F C idea is to to work on the around the edges, whether it's mastication, kind of chipper, cut stack and pile, whatever, you know, whatever those things are, um, and then do burns. And 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 the other opportunity that allows us is to introduce fire before some storms and season ending events, other other opportunities, so we can burn at a larger scale. And we have been treating around 1,000 to 2,000 acres a year on the forest, and we need to be treated 20 to 30. I'd rather be doing 20 to 30 in controlled situations as opposed to, um, you know, uncontrolled situations.
All right, any other questions for Ted on his general report? Seeing none, I guess we're ready to move into the PowerPoint here. Who's gonna take that?
I can tee us up really quickly.
Great.
All right, so we we talked to the Ted and I, we talked to the collaborative sometime last year. I was trying to remember, it was early last year. Just after the rollout of the Forest Service wildfire crisis strategy, um, to talk a little bit about the new, um, focus on fuels treatments and forest resiliency kind of across the landscapes across the United States with the Forest Service. And there was a lot of energy and effort around developing a kind of a scientifically supportable document that had high-risk fire sheds that were designated, um, that the the Washington office wanted to ensure that all of the forests focused on across the country. And I think at that time, when Ted and I were chatting with the collaborative, and we did mention that there there would be more to come, so we are here to follow up on that presentation. Some of this will be a little bit of background and review of what we talked about before about the crisis strategy. But moving forward, there's been funding now that has been, um, passed by Congress in this last year to help across the country treat these important fire sheds and landscapes. And how the Forest Service headquarters has decided to roll out this funding is by looking at particular high priority landscapes across the country that they want to focus on. Last year, they announced 10 high priority landscapes that they gave money to specifically for fuels reduction and other forest resilience treatment, um, in in landscapes across the country. In California, there were two that were designated. Um, one was on the Stanislaw National Forest and one was on the Tahoe National Forest. Yesterday, the Secretary of Agriculture announced another 11 high priority landscapes had been designated nationwide, um, and that included a small handful of landscapes across, um, California this time around. In order to get designated as one of these, um, high priority landscapes, all of the the forests across, well, I should say all of the regions across the whole country were asked to submit proposals for why their landscape should be chosen for this additional funding. What what did that landscape serve in terms of communities, in terms of watersheds, um, in terms of ecological services? So as part of that ask for these proposals, the Six Rivers and the Shasta Trinity National Forest teamed up and submitted a proposal for a a large swath of Trinity County, as well as a a small piece of Humboldt County and a small piece of Shasta County that that we deemed to be, um, a a high risk and and high priority landscape for us. Um, and also that the wildfire crisis strategy had shown was was home to I want to say several, maybe three, four, we'll we'll get into this, um, high-risk fire shed. So, um, after having chatted quite a bit and listened to the communities around our forests, we decided it was worth a shot to put in a proposal and and ask for this funding and ask to be designated as a priority landscape. So in the announcement yesterday, the secretary did, um, did announce that our Trinity landscape got selected, um, from the many proposals that were were put forth across the country as one of the new 11 national priority landscapes. And that comes with funding on a regular basis, um, throughout years as well as as this year. And so today, what Ted and I wanted to talk to you about a little bit was some of the background behind the proposal, um, why we asked for what we asked for, and what, uh, what what our hopes are for the future with this new funding stream that we're going to be receiving.
All right, want to get the next slide? Thanks, Rachel.
Yep.
So and again, just to highlight some some of the the background on the wildfire crisis strategy, that this this was a recognition by the agency that uh, as you've all seen, we're we're in, uh, a time of increased risk and and in these impacts to to a lot of communities across the West in particular. And the strategy talks about what it would take to reduce that risk and to move into a a different place. And and it's aggressive. So across the West, um, over a 10-year period, we need to treat 20 million acres. That's, it's a lot, you know, talk about 2,500, that's a lot of acres. Um, but that is, um, not the scale at which we need to be treating in the landscapes, uh, around our communities here to really address the problem at the scale the problem is, it exists. So, uh, related to that, that's where, you know, we've talked about it, there's all these acronyms. We have the bipartisan structure law that, uh, uh, pushed about $5 billion to the Forest Service over a five-year, five to 10-year period. Five years to spend the money, 10 years to do the work associated with spending that money. And then the infrastructure, uh, in, sorry, Inflation Reduction Act or Law, Earl, Bill and Earl, uh, put another $4.7 billion towards the Forest Service for fuels reduction. Again, to be spent over the next five years with the idea of getting the work done over the next 10 years to help address specifically this, uh, this wildfire crisis that 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 we're facing. So there's a lot of money, high expectations, really short turnaround. Um, and and, uh, as you may be aware, we're, we're used to having modest means and and doing the best we can and what we get. It's a little bit different environment that we're in right now. And, um, that's going to be a challenge for us because working quickly in a collaborative setting is difficult. But we have an opportunity window that we're looking at as well. I go off script a little bit, I apologize.
Click it forward, Kelly. All right, so, uh, this is, uh, these are some of the the pieces that we're working on here, um, in order to implement the wildfire crisis strategy. And, um, and we have been working on this within the means that we had. And and the reason we're we're refreshing on this is because it it's going to ramp up. Um, so we're looking at proactive and preventative treatments to support risk reduction. General forest as well as around communities, um, identifying the right location and tools to to create the right landscapes that are resilient, moving into the future in the long term. This is not a quick one-and-done kind of an effort. Um, we're looking at developing our own needed workforce capacity. We've talked to you guys about this before as well. Huge hiring push right now across the agency, um, and and the Six Rivers and Shasta Trinity are not excluded from that. Few challenges there with with, uh, lack of, uh, of of, you know, available candidates across the country at this moment. But we are seeing some success. You're hearing Tara report out periodically on on, um, folks that were able to onboard, and we will continue that push and the Six Rivers as well. And then, um, and and this one cannot be overstated enough is investments in partnerships, collaborations, contracting, um, and other ways for us to ensure that this work gets done on the ground in a timely fashion.
So th- this is just kind of a visual. We we've shared this one before, but but it highlights Trinity County and those, uh, colored uh polygons up there are the the high-risk, uh, fire sheds within Trinity County. And and as you can see, that there's a national rank there as far as, these are all the fire sheds across the country and their relative risk to each other. And I might add that Trinity County is the county with the highest risk essentially capita, uh, in the state. So so, um, we live in a high-risk area.
Those of us on Zoom aren't seeing what you're talking about. Thanks.
Okay, thank you for mentioning that, because I thought I had it shared. Um, just one second. Now, can you see it, Carol?
Now we can.
Thank you, Larry. Um, okay, so the the main point is that something that you you all know just by looking out the window, but but this this demonstrates on the map using the metrics that that are that are kind of similar across the country. It shows that we we live in an area that is at risk for, um, wildfire. And the way that our communities are distributed across the landscape here in Trinity County are such that put them in an increased risk, uh, because of the how folks, um, live in a more dispersed manner, uh, in the woods. That's the main point of that slide.
Uh, just looking at that, it's interesting that the big fires in the last few years were not rated as very high-risk areas, and yet they both burned very extensively in the past three years. So
I I and I wouldn't say they're not depending on what what events, you know, like the August complex, we we had had, uh, an unfortunate alignment of ignitions, wind events, and and, uh, just in any given year might produce something that that go back, there isn't, there's not a a a low risk out there. These are just the highest risk
In the nation.
In the nation. And everything else, even if they're not colored, are still really high risk for wildfire. And and the nice thing about, uh, and we'll we'll get into these these priority landscapes, it's not just looking at the those fire sheds. That that may be the reason that we rose to the top, but, uh, we yeah, we were able to identify the landscape, and it's looking at within that that whole landscape. I was just going to offer that the the it's one measure of risk that this this our strategy uses, and it's about sort of transference off of federal lands onto private lands and communities. So it's, uh, just know that, like, you could look at other risk maps where Trinity County is sort of all red. Yeah, you also mentioned like number one county in California for risk. That's a different measure of risk than these fire sheds. A bunch of different things. We shouldn't hang up too much.
Yeah, I mean, that's
All models are wrong, some are useful, but, um, but but the 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 point is, is no matter what look at, Trinity County pops out as an area that needs some, needs some attention.
We got, we got technical difficulties.
Zoom quit. Starting Zoom.
We are recording and
The best internet in the county here.
Does the the people on Zoom, are you still seeing us?
I can't see your screen, but you showed back up.
Hey, we had a glitch.
We we lost the video of the room and the PowerPoint.
We're still here.
Jim, this is why you know why I can do that.
Exactly. Zoom now. It's like I I got out before the pandemic hit, so.
Technology's amazing when it works right. The hard part is when it doesn't.
Which is most of the time.
Okay. People on Zoom, are you seeing?
Kelly's a magician over here, so he'll get us back on.
Are you seeing the presentation now?
Yes.
Carry on.
And we're back. Um, so this, I, you've already heard me say this, but, uh, so quick, quick, quick review, the the 10 landscapes last year. Um, and and this year, the 11 were designated with some concepts in mind that focus on restoration and resilience in the high-risk fire sheds. And I mentioned the Stanislas and the Tahoe, we're we're the first out of the chute last year. We'll talk a little bit more about this, uh, later in the presentation, but there is a lot of expectations are that are hinging on the monies that we receive for our landscape. It's it's not simply, here's your money, good luck. There's, let's see how you're going to spend it, how quickly you're going to spend it, and what you're what you're doing with it. That's making a difference on the ground.
Is it too early to ask how much?
Screen is going blocking, Kelly.
Oh, picture trees.
Yeah, lots of trees, really close together. Kelly, are you using our Wi-Fi or using your own hotspot or where are you?
We're using the, uh, here. So, okay, let's try this one. Can you report on me on the presentation now?
No, I can't see it. Okay, it's up.
So this this is a busy screen, um, but the 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 bottom line is this is what our priority landscape is, is our, the, uh, the blue, the thick blue outline there. There's two polygons, and those two polygons are are what was submitted and, um, selected for our our, um, proposed priority landscape. We we essentially built up the joint chiefs, uh, proposal we had, and then extended that where C2 states where we had the the most need and maybe the most opportunity to.
Uh-oh, it's out again.
We are at this place where we're getting invested in. Put the work in being where I think we can move at the the pace and the scale that we need to to address the problem. And then, yeah, let me make sure I get the last points there. So, oh yeah, money. I can I can share the money part. Good. So so we we have received a commitment of 15 and that's a little low, about 15.9 million dollars for for FY23. So between now and over. And 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 this is where there's, I'm excited and I have a little bit of trepidation. So the expectation is we 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 have to spend this money and we have to get the mechanisms, whether it's agreements we have to get the money off of our books and out of somebody else's book this fiscal year. And if we're successful at that, we're going to get a lot more. This is, I mean, this is this is a down payment. We've we're talking tens of millions and now we're talking hundreds of the next few years. We have to be effective at both putting the money into mechanisms that get the treatments that we need done on the ground. Start getting that work done. And so we have to obligate it and then we have to demonstrate that those obligations are meeting the expectation of what that money was given to us for. So what is it with 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 what is it Spider-Man with with great, great power, responsibility with with a lot of money come high expectations. So that's, that's where we're at. And and just not at confusion, but we we actually are double blessed because this landscape was was selected. So was the Klamath Basin. So the entire Klamath Basin was selected. Overlap between this one. So we'll be coordinating with with both efforts. But for all intents and purposes, we'll we'll really focus through this, this effort and interact with you all through the this this effort and and as we need to inform on and talk about what what may be involved with that other one, other priority landscape. We'll we'll bring that to the field, but I don't want to always focus on on what this opportunity is. And yeah, so you know, bottom line there, our commitment is we need 36500 acres this year. Above and beyond what we would have done normally. So that's 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 a big deal. And that's not, you know, there's, there's a variety of treatments that are out there. That's inclusive of tripping and and mechanical, other types of treatments. So so it's not the same cost of cutting a bunch of trees. But but that is part as well. So so that's just, that's just some of the expectation of what this year looks like. What what's on the horizon for us? Most of the, all of the money associated with this. Most of the money associated with this, really the implements we already have. That's what we asked for. It's what what we have authority to action. Some of it is also put toward planning for future. Lucky that we get next year.
The 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 office did at, the headquarters did ask us what could we spend in fiscal 23. So that's, that's why Ted's mentioning it's shovel ready projects. At this point in fiscal 23, that really with the funding to actually get done on the ground. And to the extent we can wash them at the same time, we would like to start out your planning with additional projects this fiscal year as well. But the focus in this moment is going to be on getting the getting the money, entire batch of money obligated and and the work done on ground.
Well, just just to clarify a little bit, so so the money, the money we're going to get, you know, like next two to three years. We will have 10 years, five to 10 years to spend that money. But we don't want to wait to the end to actually see the results. We need to be able to show significant results as we go.
A quick question if we could, with congratulations, by the way, and thank you for all the work that went into. And it was a leap of faith for you to do that and we're grateful. And does the suggestion made to incorporate some of the work that the PUD has done and needs to do? That collaborative suggestion that was made, is does this funding spark any kind of possibility that direction as well, maybe for future planning?
I could probably give us, we're looking at potentially using some of the money to for that big ranch project, which is a very large scale for us. It's it's between 40 and 50,000 acres preliminarily, preliminarily. And and so keeping track of the power lines that go through that unit and having the ability to get the survey work done so that we can start a large planning effort, that that's how those two things will come together. And it gives us the ability to then collaborate with BLM, with SPI, with Crow Creek and and with T-Pod for where all those things intersect and be really strategic and collaborative about the applications. Also really leaning into the CWPP, the Community Wildfire Protection Plan, to help us identify where those priorities are, areas are. And the group and the, you know, it's not, it's not lost on any of us that this collaborative group is a big reason that we're, we're a good choice to be a priority landscape and the collaboration that we've built over the years is real positioned us well for success. So yes, but maybe not in the, in the way that not, not in a direct way, but in a, hey, this, we're already going to be in this area. What do you, what are they planning? What can we do to? And that's what we should be doing with all of the other agencies and entities. Is how can our work complement the work that you're doing so that we end up with in risk communities?
So would that would be, I'm sorry, can I just follow up quickly? And within that would be the work that the RCD is now implementing with those FEMA dollars that are funneling to McConnell Foundation. You're aware of that, the 10 million?
We have, actually, we have on February 3rd, we are, have a program of work meeting planned with the Six Rivers representatives, the Forest Service representatives and two of our biggest partners, the RCD and the Watershed Center, to start looking at planning, not only for implementation this year, but in those out years and getting, getting all of us on board for how we can make this most successful.
Okay, I'll get you Tom. We got a question back here.
We need you better people know that's going to do the work, the loggers, the truck drivers and all that to, you know, cat to be hearing up because they can't do that overnight going to the cat dealership and loader operators and renting a calf. When, no, they need the robots and they need to know that this is coming and they need to be able to ramp up for it because it's the big best of the years going on, a big, big which is great for the community.
So our pilot project visioned these watersheds and and putting these shaded fuel breaks along roads in these priority areas. Are you going to incorporate that pilot project mentality within all these project areas? Because that was one of the collaborative's big pushes is that we wanted the roads to have some type of activity along it to reduce the fuels reduction, to prepare them for firefighting, prepare them for egress and ingress. And that has been a big emphasis of this collaborative for the last 10 years. Is that being incorporated into each and every project so that we can anticipate whenever it's done within this money spending dollars that it will incorporate the pilot project white paper included in those?
I mean, that's exactly what our field trips have been about, right? We, the the big ranch project, so we, we're taking the the pilot approach and the prescription for those roadside treatments and then just expanding it to include the forest health issues that are behind it. And and getting into the the fi- critical fire sheds. So so the answer is yes, it's just instead of only doing, and and since you, we started pilot, we also got the authority to do, we've got a new CE authority to do up to 3,000 acres and 1,000 foot wide fuel. So those things, the CWPP and the collaborative group, yes, we're
numerous times to be involved in program work meetings. And there used to be a committee that attended those. So you said there's one coming up and I think some representatives from the collaborative. So we're there at the front end.
Absolutely. And that's where, sorry to speak I want to have us have those conversations and what are the priority areas and what are you looking at doing and and all of those conversations? February 3rd.
People collaborative members have been connected or?
I couldn't even talk about it until, you know, the proposal. We didn't know we were select until yesterday, Jerry. So I'm trying. You'll, I'll get, you'll get you guys an invite and I was lucky enough to meet Jim yesterday too, so via the phone. So yes, I think you guys will be, like we talked about, a very key piece of making sure this is successful in Trinity County. So thank you.
Okay, I assume you have more to go?
We do.
Okay.
Larry's got his hand up. Okay, Larry.
Yeah, I just like anybody's paying attention to those of us on the Zoom here. And and I had a question going way back to when Ted was talking because the picture kept going away and the audio kept cutting out. So I don't know what those brown areas represented on his map within the blue polygons.
Go back to the map. Oh, so so, okay, so those blue, that the, can you see the screen now?
No.
No. Okay, so so I I can't tell you what the the little polygons are in there. It's a busy map. But the 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 big main concept behind the map was this is the landscape that we have money to do work in. Those are probably polygons associated with existing planning efforts.
Tied to NRCS.
Yeah, tied to tied to the two chiefs. Proposal that was that was developed a while ago. So it's it's not, I I wouldn't pay too much attention to what what's on that map other than the blue line.
All right, thank you.
Any other questions that we missed? Okay. Carry on. Forward the killing. Really?
Sorry, Kelly.
It's okay.
Daryl's running super slow and our non-network Wi-Fi that you're using is a Wi-Fi hotspot from Breton. So if you want, my personal phone, that's our wired internet that it's, it's drawing Wi-Fi from. That's our network Wi-Fi. So you shouldn't be getting kicked off the internet if you use the the phone that I drive.
I just, I can't switch without shutting down the meeting.
Got it.
This, this is a a little smattering of some of the landscape activities that we've been looking at and talking about. As we move forward, our fuels reduction, mechanical efforts. Couple of our top priorities for this year, Petty John, tip first pilot project, the August complex restoration. We're going to be looking at at all of the pieces that we can turn and implement on a pretty quick basis. And then moving forward into next year as well. Prescribed burning, I think, I mentioned that the the Six Rivers has a or is about to have a forest wide EA that covers the prescribed burning piece for for some of what the Six Rivers now that we actually have a little bit of funding. A little more bit of funding to go around here. Pre-commercial thinning opportunities and then out year planning opportunities. Shasta Trinity thinking about forest wide prescribed burning, NEPA as well. You've heard Tara talk on several occasions about the Big Ranch Fire Resilience Project. And there will absolutely be more to come there. And then our surveys for planning on Big Ranch. We've got a roadside hazard EA along the whole Asian, the northern portion of which is about to get finalized as well. And that will allow us to move forward more quickly with our roadside hazard tree removal. And I mentioned prior rivers, forest wide prescribed burn EA. So not a, oh, it should absolutely mention the the to the bottom there about our good neighbor agreement with the with Trinity County that we are very excited about moving forward with. So not an exhaustive list by any stretch, absolutely things that are on our radar screen to look at and to move ahead.
No, it's it's going through at, we're working on it.
So you know, when the proposal was first made and sent and then the return document came back, um, our it's not really Department of Transportation, it is, Panos delegated that to David Kolbeck. He had a large list of asks would be included in that document. And I really appreciate his creative thinking and trying to be as encompassing as possible. Bigger lift for to review that and get it back to us.
It was a very big list. It went out of one size and came back a different size.
Well, you'd be really good neighbors.
We are, we already are good neighbors. We're just gonna really solidify it in writing.
So I think this is not a surprise. I mean, this is the type of work that we've been talking about for a while. One, one thing that I will add is that that you know, being treated as an emergency, we're, we're, we're being effective as a party landscape because of the the situation that's out on the ground. We will also be giving other authorities that will I don't know what you want to call it. You want to call it streamlining or or we will have avenues to get work done. Different ways we've had in the past. We'll have access to different tools, different contracting mechanisms, different, different ways of of how we do our planning process. And one of the most important things related to those kind of alternative arrangements that that will be available to us is the level of support within the community that we're looking at doing that work in. So if there's broad level of support and the type of work we want to do out there, then we'll be able to access some of these other tools. If there's not, if it's divisive, then we'll have less ability to utilize those tools and we'll go through through things more of the standard way. But so that that relates to this and how quickly what what will to move. And that's, you know, building on the pilot project and other work we've done, if we're able to kind of get that vision and get, you know, general broad support to implement the vision that that we have, then then we can move quicker.
Sorry, but so with that general broad support, what additional tools will that afford you?
So so there's some, there's some different things that that haven't come out yet, but we'll like, we we would be able to access our 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 Viper contracting mechanisms. So instead of going through so that that's one mechanism. There's some aspects related to planning that hasn't been ironed yet out yet. So I can't really, I can't say because I don't want to tell you something we can't deliver, but there's some some aspects of planning where we might be able to use some tools that that reduce the timeframe to go from planning to implementation. Because there's a lot of steps in planning. Some of those would be
Kind of escalate the timeline.
It'll make things move quick, more quickly. It's not to buy past public involvement, but it will shrink it down because we already have, you know, kind of some broad levels of of agreement, understanding and then we're working closely with you. So that's in in general, those are the types of things that are being being looked at.
And Ted, I would assume this group, the collaborative, would probably play a significant role in trying to address some of those potential divisive issues.
Release and announce, we'll, we'll show you. So that it's not a black box. You'll understand. Here's the, here's the and and work with y'all to to figure out what's, what's the best way to work through that environment to get, get the end product and results where I think we're, we're trying to, trying to achieve.
We're doing online, anybody on?
I haven't heard any complaints yet. Don't want to forget about them.
I think we're going a little bit long for you guys. The, so just a quick reminder. We get significant chunks of disaster supplemental funding for fires that that occurred in in the last couple of years. So it is, it is, it is time limited in terms of where we're allowed to be spending money. That money is still there and available for us to spend in our fire footprints for our post-fire recovery efforts.
And and this is where I probably, you know, kind of got ahead of myself a little bit, but But what we're really looking at here, and I can't emphasize enough, is that the better we can and 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 come up with common business and common strategy, the the more quickly we're going to be able to operate effectively, we'll be able to 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 do the work. And, you know, as you're sharing, we're we are trying to staff up, but we're not doing most of the work. The community and and members of the community are are going to be the ones that are going to be doing a lot of the work. Most of this money is to be shifted from us to organizations, companies can help accomplish that work. It's a major investment here in Trinity County. And and it is going to take a little bit of time to kind of get that that build up and 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 it's going to be again, build the both the relationships, but also the financial mechanisms we transfer these funds, whether they're tracks, whether they're agreements, it's going to be a full suite of of mechanisms and 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 our folks doing the work as well. So I think we're going to be bottom wise, we're in it together and and we'll be as effective as we can as we work together. I mean, that that's going to be the measure of our success is how successful we're able to kind of meet this challenge and work together towards that.
Okay. Keep carry on. And Ted already talked this, the new tools and then in NIPA toolbox, there are there there is potential for some additional time saving, but still community involving techniques that we can move forward with. And we will share more about those as we know them. And then you can carry on.
Yeah, I think I think we're wrapping it up here. I don't I don't not can remember. Yeah, we are. Slides there after this, but but bottom line is is, you know, with disaster supplemental, with the priority landscape money, we we have probably north of $30 million to spend here in 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 the area in the fire footprints and the priority landscape that that's going to be work getting done this year. We are talking tens to hundreds of million dollars in out years. So so it is really important for us to think big picture, how can we connect the activities we've done? Because everything we've done today has been pretty small scale. Because that's what we've had the ability, the funding and 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 we've been building that trust and building the the understanding, what does right look like for us here? And and now I'm hoping we can leverage that and really move a lot more quickly and work to get to the scale of the problem. And 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 start putting some 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 ideas on on paper that we can all look at and understand and and get buy in on to make a difference and really reduce the risk of communities and the the residents here.
Nice saying. Go ahead. That may be the end.
Looks like it.
And there we go.
Thanks for letting us go long.
Yes. Thank you. Get a question? Reason we couldn't share that PowerPoint? For all the people, Kelly, that didn't get to see it, maybe you could just.
Uh, yes, I can. Absolutely.
Perfect.
All right, Nick, just an observation about and maybe maybe there's a recommendation in this, you know, about how we operate as the Trinity County Collaborative Group and how this will look and how it relates to our sort of implementation partnerships. You know, and I think what Tara was describing, you know, as far as the program work meeting, that's not like the standard program work meetings of the Forest Service always are always been having that sort of us as implementation partners, getting down to brass tacks on agreements and priorities for our for our workforce, essentially our human capacity of our organizations to sort of get aligned so that we can sort of meet these priorities. I think there's a collaborative component that's something a little different than the partnerships for implementation or work that we have to do that maybe a little different than you would have been doing in the collaborative group, too. So and they're not one in the same in terms of functions, like we're going to have to have meetings as implementation partners that are diving into stuff that the collaborative doesn't have to weigh in on. And then there's a bunch of stuff that's well within the purview of the collaborative and how we structure those engagements. And don't muddle them with other engagements we have to have and make better use of the collaborative at the same time, I think, is part of, you know, it's going to be part of our task now. Because this is like way above what we've been doing, right? We don't.
Come on now, you're empire building here.
It's a toll order, you know, and and I think meeting every other month isn't going to sort of maybe get us all the collaborative conversations we want to have, particularly if we're mostly just doing updates, then we're not having a program work deliberation kind of conversation. And I don't know if those should all exist as sort of a subgroup or separate group. I think we just have to talk about it, like our what we're doing right now in the collaborative isn't structured to meet the moment, in my opinion.
Well, maybe to piggyback on that a little bit, Nick, maybe someone could, within the forest, could address kind of the importance of this year as it relates to next year and the year after, right? I mean, I suspect failure is probably not an option, right? So so all hands on deck, right?
And and. Option if we want to be invested in in future years.
Correct.
The more we are this year, the more we will be a compelling investment for future years.
No question about it. So, yeah, I I think it it is appropriate then the collaborative really roll our sleeves up and and talk about, okay, what are what are the possibilities here in terms of really expanding our our ability to to meet the scope and scale of what's what we've talked about, what's being planned and.
And how to be really efficient in that and make it work with the agency sort of time will time frames and priorities. I know we don't have that agendized today as a discussion, so it's just sort of encouraging us to make room for whether that's today or soon, you know, that conversation.
Absolutely. Okay, we've got a question.
Yeah, I don't. People that's going to do the work, the loggers and timberfowers and all that, you know, they need to have a message sent out to that we're gearing up and they do. We need them to participate. We don't get anything done.
Yeah.
They're down to nothing practically.
Yeah, if I could address that. So, you know, this was, the announcement came out yesterday. We we made a bunch of phone calls all afternoon yesterday to let let folks know. And then we're we're here today letting this collaborative group know. But you're right, the the I need to meet with the public. I need to meet with Jen, see, let BLM know kind of where we're at and where we're thinking about going. I need to meet with the Fire Safe Council. I need to meet with individual board of supervisors representatives. So there's a lot of things that's one and and the public is certainly a big part of that. We started having public meetings last year, getting getting people back on board, letting them know what we what we had planned. And this is certainly another opportunity. We have a press release that's gone out. The news is interested. So we're doing everything we can to make sure our local communities are are informed. And you're right, we not only do we need, but the collaborative group and the infrastructure that we have in place in the North State is a big reason that we're that this will be successful, you know. And I, you know, we've, you guys are so, you know, calm, cool and collected when you do this. I wanted to go outside and spike a football yesterday because I was so excited for what this can do for Trinity County and for the health of our forests and for our communities. We've been building on our relationships with our local partners. They've been adding employees, adding capacity. This is just really a good, a good tool to get us to something that's sustainable over the long run, not just a little blip in funding where we do things, you know, more for one year, but that we are just, we start to really make significant gains on our landscape and in our community. So the public is a big part of that. The industry is a big part of that. Our partners are a huge part of that. This group is going to help us figure out where those priorities are. I I, you know, everybody I got to call yesterday, I was so excited to get to tell them, you know, the good news that we're going to go out and we've got some tools now to go get more work done in a community that desperately needs it and and make significant strides. So Nick is right, you know, I've got some meetings to talk about program of work, what's your capacity to do, you know, prescribed fire, hand thinning, what's your capacity for planning? And then coming back with the collaborative and saying, hey, these are the areas we've tentatively planned on for the next, you know, three, four years. What does this look like to you? Does this make sense? Is this a good fit? Having those conversations is and then going out to the public and saying, this is what we're thinking. What do you think? Yeah, I'm, this is a great, great thing for us. And I wished I had brought a football for everyone so we could all go outside. It's either the the Kirk Gibson after the home run thing, you know, when he's going around the bases, like this is a great thing for us.
It takes to learn to order.
It absolutely doesn't.
All this stuff to come, knowing that there is the work and that they can bid on it and.
You're exactly right. And and my background is in the logging industry. So I'm I'm well aware that that we've got to get the word out to them as well. And and the small loggers and I had some of those conversations at the McFarlane bit opening, there are spoke some people there, just, you know, we're planning on having some small timber sales going out, looking at revamping our SSTs offerings that are just those small set aside sales for some of the hazard tree things. There's there's just a lot going on and and the public interest is going to be a really big part of that.
I used to be forestry manager for S P I company. So, you know, that's what my job was.
Absolutely.
Make sure all this equipment and people were ready to move into these and game of these other areas. So you can have this block and this block of Trinity County and, you know, anything that happens, that's forever. So point for two and Kelly. This may be the purpose to reinvigorate. Last two, three, four meetings with Patty, we were talking about how do we redefine what our role is, what we do? Just as outreach to the community to bring members back. I mean, the collaborative when we started.
Well, let me put that on hold. I know Rachel's got to get out of here soon. Any any questions for Rachel before she leaves us? Thank you again, Rachel, for your presentation and presence here today.
Thank you for having us here. Yeah.
Ted, as well, thank you for making the long trip over.
You betcha.
Yeah, but any questions for Rachel before she needs to?
I have just a couple. The I was wondering if there if there's, at this point, was a rough breakdown of that, like 15.9, how that's getting split between the two polygons that are identified per priority.
No, none, not even in the slightest.
Okay. And then the of of within those priority landscapes of that specific funding, is that primarily like resilience type of work or is it also like reforestation? Is it also recovery type of work or is it all that fuels reduction? Fire type of work?
Yes. So so when we're talking forest health, so reforestation, that that's a part of forest health. So so there's there's aspects of that 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 we can spend money on. The I wouldn't get too hung up on on the number. Because frankly, there's so much money in the system right now that if we have opportunity to spend more than that and have a vehicle to do that, we can ask for that and we'll likely get it. So I wouldn't I wouldn't worry too about too much about the number. The type of work that's authorized to do is really about reducing risk, promoting forest health. And and for us, you know, it's it's how do we create a landscape that can receive fire that is a natural part of this landscape in a way that reduces the risk and doesn't provide how the the level hazard does right now to our our communities. So reforestation and 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 there's a lot of things that are included in that. So we have broad broad authorities there, I think, for the type of work that we do here anyway. The focus right now is what do we have under the books that's currently authorized that we have planning and decisions in place? That's where we're going to focus most of it this year.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thanks. So anybody online questions for Rachel before we lose her? Can you hear me? Okay, all right. Thank you. Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thanks, Ted. Thanks, Rachel.
So this is going to have any effect on our rack?
Well, the NIPA will give us a way that the raccoons themselves won't go up, but will get us more places to go to. Go have the NIPA coverage.
Okay. Thank you, Tara.
Yeah, I'm super excited.
Any other questions for Tara?
Yes.
So again, circling back to Jerry's comment here, it sounds like you you want to.
I think I was done, but it got the points.
Yeah. Sounds like you're kind of inquiring whether or not the collaborative may need to consider more investment of of time and energy to facilitate, you know, some of the things that certainly are going to have to happen to kind of provide the support necessary.
Necessary. My first thought was just getting more bodies.
Oh, okay. Recruitment. All right, we ready to wrap this one and move on to our next agenda items, right? Update on illegal grows. Do we have somebody here from?
I was unable to connect with Tim Sexton, although I tried to reach out to him on several occasions and I got no responses from him. So I understand that there is Matt Swanson representing Shasta Trinity National Forest an update for us, and I don't know about Six Rivers. So Matt, I see you have popped up there.
Can you guys hear me? Okay?
Yes, yes.
Okay, excellent. First of all, I I appreciate you having me. I'm sorry, I'm I'm not in uniform. I got my one day off today and my my four year old son went in for surgery at five o'clock this morning. So priority today, minor, it was a minor thing, adenoids, he he needed to have it done. So so again, my the surgery took priority. I apologize. I wanted to be there in person to to meet you guys and everything. I'm standing in for our patrol captain. Captain Jennifer Lynn, she's comes to us from the Eldorado National Forest. She took the job in January. So she's the new patrol captain of the Shasta Trinity. She's had a fantastic job for us, great leadership, really enjoyed working for her. So she had an appointment come up last second, actually asked me to stand in for her. So here I am. I I realize it's lunch thirty. My introduction will be a lot longer than my presentation, so bear with me. But I know a lot of you in the room are familiar with me. Some may know me, some may not. So I'll just give you a quick background of who I am, where I come from and and my my passion for Trinity County. Matt Swanson, Forest Service Law Enforcement Officer out of Weaverville. I joined the I graduated Trinity High School in 2000. Went to Silver Grad. Two days later, I was employed with the Forest Service. Been here ever since. I've been on the Shasta Trinity since June of 2000. And with the exception of 2018 to 2019, my office has been in Weaverville. So a lot of a lot of buy in in that county for me. I started in recreation, cleaning bathrooms all over the 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 forest there. 2000, 2007, I became a fire prevention officer with a primary focus on fire investigation. And then in 2017, I was able to pick up the law enforcement in on the Mendocino National Forest, finally transferred back to Weaverville. So been in law enforcement for about five years. I specialize in arson investigation, wildland fire investigation. I I'm not. I I assist in the marijuana operations and everything when I can. It's not my passion. Fire investigation is my passion. I'm on two of our regional wildland fire investigation teams in California. We just became a national resource. And I'm sure as Tara can agree, I'm pretty good at making myself invincible to the to the district there, unfortunately. That that's got me pretty busy in the summer. When I took this job, you know, I thought it was going to be a lot more patrolling the ground that I grew up in and it just, it's not, and it's it's it it's hard for me to accept that because of how much I love that area. It's it's gorgeous. But just a reminder, don't ever be good at anything because you'll get pulled in all kinds of directions. So if you guys have any questions, by all means, shout them out. The the quality of the video, at least from my side, is not very good. So if I miss it, please repeat it or raise your hand or something. I can I can see some some blurry video. I was able to collaborate with Dr. Gabriel. He's our law enforcement wildlife ecologist and Captain Jen Lynn. And also our my my partner, Law Enforcement Officer Logan Brown, he is on the Hayfork side. Logan and I share Trinity County. I I think he said it best, there was, I think, over 800,000 acres of national forest land on west of I-5, and I share that with one officer. So you got two of us for the entire Shasta T on the west side of I-5. It's a lot of land to cover, but we really try and get our hands on everything we can because the communities deserve it. They deserve the attention. So I was able to collaborate with a lot of those folks to get some of this information. They gave me some talking points. So a lot of this, so excuse me while I refer to my notes during my my presentation here. So I think basically the I know I know the primary focus for this is going to be kind of the the sites reclaimed and and kind of what direction that's heading. I'm going to do my best to represent the information that was provided well. Forgive me if I stutter because this is all coming in pretty new to me. So so in 2002, let's see, 2022, a total of three trespass marijuana grows were reclaimed. Uh, a total of three, um, trespass marijuana grows were reclaimed, uh, in Trinity County. Uh, I'm just going to focus on Trinity County numbers here. June sixteenth of two thousand twenty-two, there was two sites in the Sweet Creek area. That's kind of down the, on the four road down river there. Sweet A, A is an alpha. We, we reclaimed. Uh, let's see, one thousand five hundred and twenty pounds of trash and debris from that site. It was nine hundred pounds of trash, six hundred and twenty pounds of, uh, black pipe. And which equivalent was equivalent to seventeen thousand, seven hundred and fourteen feet of pipe at that site. The water diversion gallons restored from that site alone. They have it over ten million, nine hundred and nine thousand gallons of water, uh, diversion restoration for that site alone. The second site in that area was called Sweet B as in Boyd. Uh, same, same day, same week, we reclaimed that one as well. That was a kind of a smaller site, uh, tributary off the, the, the main site. There was a hundred and eighty pounds of trash. I'm sorry, a hundred and eighty pounds total, hundred fifty pounds of trash, uh, thirty pounds of pipe. Uh, about eight hundred and fifty-seven feet. And then the water diversion gallons restored for that one was just over one point four million. So. The, when, you know, when we reclaim these sites, it, it obviously the trash and getting the infrastructure out of there is, is the priority. Including the hazmat that we find at these places. But just the, I, I found these numbers astonishing, these water diversion restoration totals. That's, I mean, ten million gallons. That's, uh. I, I know our, our waterways and watershed systems can, can use that. So, um, those, that's what I like to see for sure. The third site in Trinity County was. Looks like May twenty-seventh. One thousand seven hundred and sixty pounds total, nine hundred pounds of trash, eight hundred and sixty pounds of pipe. Which is about twenty-four thousand feet. And that site had just over two point seven millions of, of water gallon, uh, diversion restoration for that site. So. Um, uh, all three of these sites, several sprayers that were containing carbopurin, uh, were removed from the area. Via hazmat contractors. Um, that's not including, you know, all the other, just the, the, the random things we find out there. There was dead wildlife, obviously. Um, a lot of these sites are being, uh, monitored for the wildlife impacts. And the, and the impacts on the environment as well. So a lot of those, a lot of those, um. Monitoring, monitoring operations, uh, you know, they kind of hinder the, the reclamation efforts. Because how else can you gather data without, you know, leaving, leaving this stuff in place to see what effect it has on the wildlife, on the ecosystem? However, the sites with hazmat and things like that, those are priority, uh, removals. Those have to be out of there. We, we try and get those done. We try and get the funding and the personnel to get those out of there as, as rapidly as we can. So that we're not killing wildlife by trying to find out. How it affects the wildlife. So sites with hazmat obviously are a priority. And, and it's, it's, it's a very, it's a fine line of trying to collect data, but also, uh, remove, you know, clean the site up. So. Um, let's see. That pretty much wraps it up for the two thousand twenty-two stats. Uh, I know a lot of these fires have taken care of, of several of these sites. That were, you know, go undetected. Um, I, it was, it was rather concerning to me that, um, someone, uh. High above me in the chain of command, uh, thought that because our stats were down as far as, um, marijuana operations. That, you know, the, the problem is ceasing to exist. Uh, I, I disagree with that because it's there. Four weeks later, after that comment was made, we find two sites in the same week in the Hayfork area. Both of them were active. That was in, uh, October. One of those sites was, was discovered by a hunter, um, who reported it. We went in, we made an entry on that site and there was active marijuana, um, processing occurring while we, while we were there. No apprehension in that one. We opened a case on it. Um, I don't want to give you too much on that one because it's an active investigation. So those are the, the sites that we discovered last year, um, are in the plans, obviously for being reclaimed. However, they, we're just getting started with that, um, basically that case development. So. That, that'll be a little ways out before we can actually reclaim those ones. We did find a third site last year as well, uh, a- after we had made entry into the second site that we discovered. The second site yielded, I, I believe, and I'm guessing. I want to say there was over four thousand pounds of processed marijuana. That were underneath tarps and ready to be, um, hiked out of that site. We did, we were able to make one apprehension, um, at that site via canine deployment. Uh, we did lose two. Two subjects got away from that site. So. It's out there. The problem still exists. Uh, we're doing everything we can, obviously with. Lo and behold, we're all, everyone's short-staffed, but, um, I think we worked very, very well with the cooperators in Trinity County to get this stuff done. When we have the funding and that, and the personnel. Um, let's see. So those, those sites that I just mentioned, those will be, because they're active investigations, we, we kind of have to let that lay low for a second. Before we can actually go in and reclaim everything because we have to prosecute and, and, and gather all that evidence and process everything. So. Those will be in the future. However, what we had planned for the two thousand twenty-three season, um. As far as reclamation goes is the visit and the reclamation of eight sites in the Trinity County wilderness. Uh, I'm sorry, the Trinity Ops Wilderness. Uh, the plan is ru- remove all hazmat associated with those sites during the site visits and remove all in- infrastructure at those sites. Infrastructure being, you know, uh, hooches, processing areas, kitchens, um, propane tanks. I mean, it's, it's unbelievable what they have out there. I'm sure a lot of you guys know what, what goes on out there. Another talking point here is to initiate collaboration with Trinity County. The Waters, uh, W R T C with the Forest Service L E nine. Recently acquired C D W F cannabis restoration grant. So I guess the, uh, California Fish and Wildlife. Got a, uh, restoration grant. So we're looking to collaborate and, and get everybody on board with that. So. Facility train protocol that will be USFS and B L M approved. Or W R T C to train groups throughout the state in Trinity County. So. That's pretty much the talking points I had from, uh, from the folks that I talked to, to, to prepare for this. Um, if you guys have any questions, by all means, please let me know. I'll do my best to, to get you an answer right now. If I, if I don't have the answer today, I'll die trying to get it for you, uh, tomorrow, the next day. So. Um, I'll open up to you guys. I'm here for you for as long as you need me.
All right. Thank you, Matt, very much. Any questions for Matt?
Matt, I don't know if he said where the third reclaimed site was in the Gotti.
The third reclaimed site, uh, so, yes, okay. I'm sorry. Yes. So Black Lasic was the. Was the third reclaimed site in two thousand twenty-two. That was over, yeah, I'm, I'm sure you know Black Lasic, it's on the Mad River.
Yeah.
Mad Riverside over there. Yep.
Thank you.
That was a, uh, that, I think that was a ten, I think that site's been used and reused for. It sounds like after talking to the local officer over there for over ten years, uh, we hit it all the time. They keep coming back and we're going to just going to keep cleaning it up. So, um, but yeah, that was the third site. Thank you.
Any other questions for Matt? All right. Thanks again, Matt, for your. Presentation this morning. Appreciate you being with us.
Absolutely. Thanks for having me.
Thank you, Matt. That's wishes for your.
Yes.
Son there.
Yeah.
Let us know if you need anything.
Absolutely. Yes. Everything is great. He's asleep right over there on the couch. So.
Thank you. Okay. Anything else on the illegal grows? Seeing none, let's move on to, uh. Other items, partner updates. Anybody on the rec committee prepared to give us an update?
Well, I guess it would probably be me because I think I was the only person that was actually present, uh, that's in attendance today. So, um, the biggest topic was Myersville Boat Ramp and, um. Unless, uh, Paul, you were, you were at that meeting.
I was.
Yep. You want to, you want to, you want to give impressions?
Yeah, you probably want somebody else besides me.
We went the trail around the lake, Paul.
You weren't there to represent. So we didn't really talk about that too.
In the, in the, in this exact same amount gets accomplished whether I'm there or not.
Do you want me to go ahead and I'll just, I'll give a, a brief synopsis. So my understanding, uh, from a discussion that I had actually with, um. Sarah, um, Eggeridge, uh, prior to that, as she wasn't attending that particular meeting. Was that the, with, with regards to the Myersville Boat Ramp. The NRA has determined that they don't feel like they have enough funding that's already allocated. From the Department of Boating and Waterways to actually, um, move forward with an RFP to get the engineering done. To, to, um, move that project forward. So they asked for an additional hundred and sixty thousand dollars from DeBau. Uh, to, to move forward and they wouldn't, they haven't been able to get a written commitment. Um, of, of those additional funds. They have like a verbal, but, uh, the force is not comfortable going with the verbal. So. Do you want to give this report?
So, yeah, it sounded like. They, uh. Basically were told they needed to send that another letter in. So it went in right away.
Right. And the force sent a letter to the Department of Boating and Waterways.
I think there's.
Hold it down and waiting for the response, right?
So me and you are kind of in coordination that, uh, maybe a phased approach.
Yeah.
Might be good to get some work done. Uh. I did push that Sarah, because I told you guys I would.
You got shot down like we did.
No, it's not. It's not even, I don't think it's, it's, she shouldn't down. She just, basically she just says it's not a possibility right now because we don't have an engineer design. Need an engineer designed to get it phased. So that was kind of a response from Sarah and then. So I responded with, okay. So I, it doesn't sound like she's opposed to that. It's just.
Is there any follow-up though to DeBau relative to this request? What I might expect a response from them?
If he's still here.
Todd was just tunneling out.
I got thrown under the bus for sure. I don't, I don't know. I don't have, really have any information except what you guys have discussed, right? It's, we need. Plans, uh, before we can build. I don't have correspondence with that group.
So, so maybe I can chip in a little. Is, is Jill Cox still there?
No, no.
So Jill sent a letter to, um, Assembly, no, to Mark McGuire, who has helped us with this in the past. Mike McGuire, thank you. Um, asking if he could, um, contact DeBau. And, um, get that written response, committing the funding. So, um, she's trying to. Um, elevate it a little bit just to put the little bit of a spur under DeBau to respond.
So I can follow up a little bit on that Jill shared with me that she has gotten a response from McGuire's office. They are going to reach out. It hasn't happened yet. But Kelly, since you opened the door, I mean, we, we need to put some bookends on this. I mean, we, we got a grant from DeBau because of Mike McGuire five years ago. I mean, is it any surprise in five years that the cost has gone up and, um, we have yet to get a bid out in five years. And now the lake's filling up, right? We had the perfect opportunity to do this. You know, so the thought that we discussed at the Recreation Committee meeting was, well, let, let's get a concrete ramp down. And we can keep arguing about the irrelevant parking lot for years to come because nobody's going to park in it because it's low water ramp. And why would we let that hold us up from getting some concrete on the ground before that lake fills up? And, um, you know, the reality is it's not going to happen. Um, I mean, I'm just, I'm just being realistic. Hopefully we don't lose the grant. We did last time. Oh, what was that? Six or seven years ago? We lost the last grant. So, um, here we are deja vu all over again. And that's why it was best that I not make any comments.
And I just use vague numbers because I don't know the numbers. I mean, I know minors, I grew up here. I know that's the only place you put in.
Yeah.
On the lakes though, right?
Yep.
And it's dirt when you get down there. So I just, I think what you guys are looking at is like, obviously the water is coming up now. So if the proposal was for a thousand feet, maybe this year we can only do four hundred feet or five hundred feet. Or this park can also go, like we could start with those plans as long as you're able to extend. Cause I'm assuming you're going to extend off of what's already there for.
When I assume you wouldn't need the hundred and sixty thousand even maybe for the design piece if we're, if we're phasing this, right? So it wouldn't necessarily be held up by needing for the full-blown design for the parking lot and everything. So, I mean, if we can get an agreement on the phased approach, it seems like we could kind of scale everything back.
It's not our unit.
It's not our unit. So I was just saying, so on, from Roy's mind, that sounds like a great idea.
Yeah.
Think she's against it. It's just.
All right, Carol, Carol, Carol's got a comment here.
Yeah. So the Recreation Committee has asked repeatedly to, um, phase this. And, um, the last meeting we had with Rachel, um, we asked the same question again. Earlier we were told we couldn't phase it because of the way the Forest Service, um, contracting. Agreements procurement was working in terms of, you know, hiring someone. They had to have a whole project. Um, but, um, I, I really, I don't think the Recreation Committee understands why. Uh, other than this, you know, contracting issue, the Forest Service can't ask DeBau to. Do a phased project. Part of the reason we've asked for a phased project is there are other, there's surplus parking. And other places around the lake and that, um, could be factored in. To decrease the overall size of the parking lot. We haven't gotten an answer from DeBau on that. We're really hoping, Rachel said she would prioritize this and I don't, I'd have to say, I don't think that that's happening. Anyway. But we're kind of going around and around here.
And, and we're going to let a hundred and sixty thousand. I mean, I know there's your separate pots of money, but the Forest Service is swimming in money right now. I mean, can we? And DeBau's verbally said they're going to give a hundred and sixty thousand. Are we really going to wait to check that box? To move forward? I mean, is that unrealistic to say, can't we just bid this thing out?
It's unrealistic.
You know, we, uh, Sarah's, I, I know, um, I, I've been on enough of these meetings. I, I understand your frustration. Uh, I certainly think that about the time we get our ducks in the row, we made it rain. So that's, we got that going for us. But, uh, I, I get it. Um, and I, I understand too with the trail that, you know, the, the frustration. And, um, I know it, we have talked about it, uh, even at the, the leadership team that, that the Myersville project is a priority. The contracted piece of it is, is complex from our side of the, um, world. But I totally understand your frustration. And then so some of the new tools that are coming on board and opportunities may create a, a, a better route. But, um, no, just, it's hard to say, oh, yeah, you're working on it. It's been five years, ten years. I, I totally understand that. But it, it is crystal clear. It's, it's not part of the T R M U, but it's crystal clear to, to Todd who's on the call, to Roy, to me, to. To Carrie and to Rachel that, that it is important to this county and that, um, it, it has a lot to do with recreation, has a lot to do with your access to the lake and all those things. So, well, not only will we keep working it, um, I understand, uh, is a risk of getting it in writing really that big of a risk? I get it. Do we not? But we also, we keep shoving the rock up the hill. Maybe we see there's a better route. Um, as these other tools are coming on. Um, and so we will definitely communicate that with, with, uh, and get, have Sarah or, um, somebody from the NRA. Ri- report back. Um, though that's not what you want to hear. Um, but, and we'll try to keep the collaborative, uh, as we get any movement.
Agendaize this potentially for the next meeting and.
I think it's on every agenda, but I think you should keep it there. And at the same time, I.
Prepared to come and give us an update and.
Yes.
Sounds like an internal decision needs to be made before we can move forward. Prepared to come and give us an update and it sounds like an internal decision needs to be made before we can move forward.
Well, but the next. The next collaborative meeting is two months away. I mean, seriously, I really, I really appreciate Tara's, you know, what you're saying. But the thing is, we keep hearing the same thing over and over again. I mean, we keep hearing those words over and over again. It's a priority. You know, we're working on it and all that stuff and it's just not moving. You're not moving the block up the hill. Not you personally, but the Forest Service.
Understand. When when would you like an update? Be right. Two months is too long. When when can we?
From a North County. I mean, from a North County perspective, I mean, the lake is our economic driver, you know? And so not having access to the lake, any decent access, I mean, people last year were tearing up their trucks, you know? They were getting stuck in the mud. They're wrecking their trailers, trying to use what was available to them at Myersville. I mean, that's that's just, it really, the community up here is so, so upset with you guys. I can't say that enough.
So Carol, she's asking when we could, when we should expect a report back? Maybe the Rec Committee? Is that is that a possibility?
The Rec Community, the Rec Committee only meets the week before the collaborative, so that's another two months.
Well, I mean, maybe we could schedule something in advance for that.
Why can't they report, send a email to Kelly and say, this is where we're at.
Okay.
Doing.
There we go.
When Kelly can distribute it.
What's what's the timeline, Tara? You could expect some that kind of a, and and I think the specific question is because it sounds to me like this phased approach has yet to be approved, right? By line officers, decision makers within NRA, right? And so that's what we need to hear back. Is it? Is that is that something that we can?
I what what? So Sarah's, it's today is Friday, the twentieth. Can we, eleven days is the end of the month. Is that a reasonable amount of time to get get something back to you by the end of the month?
Better in two months.
And then I'm just, I did have one update for you, just to let you guys know, you know, and the kind of, I'm sure it feels like you're getting lip service. I'm just a straight shooter. I I understand that. We did, we had Jody, one of our deputy regional foresters was up in in Trinity County last fall. And one of the stops was we took her to Myersville. We gave her the, we told her the backstory of having the grant lined up the first time and then, you know, made it rain. And then the the grant was lost. And so we we made it clear even to the at the regional level, this is a priority. This is the reason it's priority. And that field trip was, you know, the the Deputy Regional Forester was there, the head of Recreation, the director was there. And then Rachel was there, Carrie was there. So so all the people were there looking and I I took a, you know, what is it, like a mile hike down the edge of the lake from the butt ranch? I was like, it's down there somewhere. And I hadn't been to that one, so I got to walk all the way down to there. But so just know that we at least have done that. I don't know if anyone told you that we specifically took her out there to look at that boat ramp. But we did to make sure the region was aligned to support us getting this thing moving. So I I get it. The thirty first, we'll get something.
I mean, we also had, we had, we also had a face to face meeting with with Rachel in Reading with the Recreation Committee members. It was like the beginning of November. Kelly would know. I mean.
It was mid September, actually.
September? So what has happened since September?
We got the fire thing through. They got the fire.
Hopefully, there were some trees going right in there. I understand, Carol, and I and I, I totally understand your frustration.
Okay, well, thanks. Thanks for everything you're doing.
Yeah, thank you. I think we've, we're moving forward on the Vista Point thing. We we talked about that the other day as well. Remember, we had talked about those Vista Points that you couldn't really see anything? So we we do have a plan to to get some of that work done sooner rather than later.
Yeah, you know, that was a low, that was a low hanging fruit when we talked to Vilsack in two thousand thirteen.
Yep. So so we're gonna, we're gonna go harvest it and Todd and his unit have that squarely in their sights for for at least moving that as quickly as we can. So totally get it.
Yeah. All right, Tara, thank you very much for committing to get getting some kind of.
Response to the question.
I think Paul and Carol are just bringing everybody down. They shouldn't critique any more meetings.
Sorry, I'm sorry.
People that critique the meetings, where they still have some hope.
It's fair. It's fair.
Historians are very important in these forums.
I did want to mention one other thing too, that a significant portion of that meeting was also a great report out from Monique and I think was Peter on, yes, on on the.
Bowerman Barn?
Well, there was Bowerman Barn mentioned, but I was just referring to the usage, last year's usage of Alps, the numbers of permits and all that kind of stuff. And it was a great presentation and it really like showed a lot of excellent information and in a, in a, in a really digestible way, which was, I thought was great. So and I think they were intending to pull together like some data so that for Ascend, Ascend requested that so that we could have a look at what it actually, you know, like what the usage was like pre pandemic through the pandemic and that and now how it's how that may have affected people's use of the of the actual Alps and things of that nature. So I just wanted to thank Monique and recognize that that was a really good presentation. So.
Kelly, once that all that data is brought together, can you send it out to everybody?
Yes, yeah, that, absolutely. I think that they shared with me the their presentation, which I could get out right away. And then they had a little work to compile the various years. So but I could get that out to everybody.
All right. Anything else on the Rec Committee?
Um, Kelly, quick comment. I can get, because the the presentation, it only had, I guess, our popular trail heads on it. So I can get one with a more, I guess, accurate display of usage on other trails too, if that's of interest.
I didn't see Pat Poo's. I'd be interested in Pat Poo's.
If if you'd like, I mean, I the ones, I mean, you you did hit all the the major ones. But but I think if if when you pulled together the the actual data in a tabular format, I think that will be useful to have kind of all of them.
Yeah, that sounds good. Cool.
Thanks, Monique.
Thank you.
Anything else on Rec Committee before we move on? Take it away, Kelly.
I'm going to defer to Chris to give the RCD report.
Okay.
Largely.
The we've laid off our crews. So we've had, we had four crews on. Since our last meeting, they were all laid off. And then we brought one crew back on that's currently as as they can assisting with Forest Service pile burning as much as possible, just to increase that capacity. And then we'll continue to look forward as we get more consistency burn windows to bring on another crew, with that being their primary focus as as the window is there for the burning. And then we also all but finished up our rack agreement and that's around eighteen acreage or so out in the Guy Covington area. So that's been just about completed. There's a little bit of cleanup and stuff left, some specific areas. And then we're still on hold for our Brown's Phase Three, just kind of awaiting decision on whether there's commercial there or isn't, or if we need to shift focus on those, that that funding. And then that was just about to expire in December. And so all the necessary paperwork has been filed to extend that. So not as much of a rush at this point. And then we have another big project, not as forest related, but for this, it's relevant for the overall scope of planning is our McConnell Grand is moving forward. We've had two big public meetings, relatively well attended. And they, there's, if you guys weren't on, when I described it previously, it's essentially the Guy Covington area. And then the corridor that goes up through Trinity Center, a lot of that's on SPI ground. And then some of the surrounding SPI ground as well as private parcels around Weeville. So there's one more public meeting on Monday. And it's all going to be Zoom. So if anybody couldn't get over to any of the in person stuff, that information's on our website or they could reach out directly. And that's, it's, you know, going to treat four thousand or so acres or more as funding allows. So it's one of the larger projects. And it'll, I think, play an important role in tying other forest service planning efforts as well as other projects just as we move forward. But I think that's all I really have for, at least for me.
Okay, thanks, Chris. Any questions for Chris? Kelly, anything else?
I was just, I don't know. There's been, it's been a lot. I would have to say that the, I one thing I would like to, I guess, comment on most is just the the amount of coordination that's happening right now, like between the various partners, the different agencies, the, you know, between our organization, Watershed Center, there's just pretty much on every level, you know, whether it's up or Trinity Headwaters or, you know, Recreation, you know, the obviously Forest Health and all that, there's, it's, there's a lot of work that's happening and there's a lot of money coming into the county, obviously, as we've been talking about all day. And, yeah, I'm just, I just have a lot of gratitude for the partners that we have because there's, there's so much going on and that, you know, for a smaller, you know, population base as we have in this this county, you know, we're, there's a, there's, there's an amazing amount of work that's happening. And there's a many, an amazing amount of potential on the near horizon for the, for all of these different projects. And so I wanted to thank our partners, Tara and, you know, Nick and everybody else for how much the, how we're working together now is is leagues from where we were even five years ago. And so I just, I wanted to just sort of acknowledge that because it's, it's, it's an important thing that we're doing all together collectively, including this group to to really further, you know, the safety of the of the communities, the safety, the environment and and the and the amount of, you know, opportunity that that we're providing to, that we're helping to provide to not only the the immediate communities, but, you know, everybody that comes and enjoys this place that we all love. And so thank you all for that.
Yeah, thank you. And just to give some perspective on on what Kelly was saying, I I can share when I arrived at the SCS office in September of nineteen ninety, the RCD had a half of employee and they were co-located with us. And I think we had like a, I don't know, a two thousand dollar agreement with them to kind of keep them afloat. So we've seen, you know, tremendous amount of growth in the Watershed Center was non-existent, you know, so the capacity locally that we've seen here develop over the past, you know, twenty five, thirty years is pretty remarkable, especially when you really compare it to other counties here in the North State. So, yeah, just really commend the leadership and vision that many of you had to make this all, kind of make it play out. So, okay, Nick, anything from the Watershed Center?
Yeah, I'm going to let Xander, Xander kick it off with a report out on a couple of of fields projects that the fiber group's been tracking and then I'll fill in.
All right. Thanks, Nick. Good afternoon, everyone. I've got a couple of specific updates here. First, I'll start with the Bowerman Ridge project. We're working to really kind of fine tune details on the the scoping process. It's been some, you know, sort of small last minute adjustments that we're addressing. And then also been assisting with some of the specialist reports to get those really buttoned up well or reduce scope. I don't want to take a stab at a a time estimate on that because I don't want to jinx anything, but soon, from my understanding. And then the other process I'm involved in is Forest Health Grant Proposal for the Watershed Center. Generally in the the regions of Hay Fork and High Palm, and it'll serve to improve connectivity between other existing or, you know, sort of approved projects. So it'll be, a portion of it will be Trinity Timberlands on on South Fork Mountain. It's a private tract of industrial timberland. And so those land managers are interested in creating some fuel breaks that will tie in with some Forest Service proposed fuel breaks on the South Fork Mountain Ridge. These private ones will connect down Pelletree Ridge to High Palm. We're also looking to treat roadside on a federal right of way in and out of High Palm and then sort of try and connect from High Palm to the pilot project in Indian Valley and then from there to Hay Fork and then try and, you know, fill in some of the gaps around the Hay Fork community also. That's still fairly early in in our process and our scope of work. So I don't think I can provide, you know, really specific details at this time. But, you know, if anybody's curious about updates on that, go ahead and reach out to myself or Randy. And I think those details will be forthcoming pretty quickly here in the next week or so, scope of work wise. And that's pretty much what I have. If there are any questions specific to those, I'll do my best.
All right. Thank you, Xander. Any questions?
Just on the project you were talking about, this is more maybe for Tara. Is this the DNA that has happened that I hear rumors about?
No, as a matter of fact, I can probably, so no decision has been made on our High Palm project that was scoped. I did get, I read through all the scoping comments and I'm, it sounds like I need to make sure that our projects complement each other really well. But I I haven't, I need to go back out and meet with Larry Winters and the High Palm Fire Safe Council and then report back. That'll be our next, our next field trip will probably be looking to get out in that High Palm country. So.
But the tangent then is, isn't there a DNA happening?
There's the potential to do a DNA for sure. That's one of the options as well as there's a, there's, we could do the roadside fuel break CE or we could do the plantations and the fuel breaks. But so I haven't, I haven't, I have to talk to the local Fire Safe Council before I make a decision which route we're going to do. We're definitely going to do something in High Palm. And so to be clear, the DNA, it it still requires analysis. You still have to make sure that this is the right tool in the right place and that the High Palm project is similar enough to Pilot that it it makes sense to use that. I think of it like a cookie cutter, you know, it's like Pilot was here and you just move over a little bit and then you put put it into the High Palm area. And I and I think that's likely possible. But there were some, there were some question, questions in scoping about the roadless area, about the Patterson Wilderness, and those are things I need to meet with the locals who were really a big part of developing the proposal and share that information and and look and see what they're comfortable with before I move forward.
So could you just tell me us what the DNA is and how it works?
Absolutely. A DNA is new to the Forest Service. It's a decision, a determination of NEPA adequacy. So basically, the NEPA that was done for Pilot, if if that's established that it, that the High Palm treatment is similar enough in both the treatments, the species, the, all of those things, if it's similar enough, we can just tear off of the the Pilot EA. And then the workload for us, instead of being at the EA level, comes down to more like a CE level. We still have to make sure, we still have to do some wildlife. We still have to work with Fish and Wildlife Service, do our surveys, but it 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 makes that NEPA lift a little lighter. If we can say, you know what, this went through, this is, this treatment is just like that one. And then we can do, the NEPA process will be streamlined if we were.
Trying to apply that to the High Palm work?
If it's, if it's the right fit, yes. So that's where I'm at, is I'm making sure that this is what they, what the the Fire Safe Council is looking for is is something like this. Make sure it's apples and apples and then pick the route forward for that.
Thank you. Is that unique to all federal agencies? I mean, unique to the Forest Service or does it, is it applicable to NEPA in general now?
So BLM has had that authority for a long time. We just got it.
We just got it.
As a matter of fact, I don't know of anyone that's used it yet in the agency.
So a question that I would have is that we have this McConnell Foundation project that's happening. We're doing a SEQA. It's going to be followed up with a NEPA that's going to be completed by FEMA itself, as I understand it. Can you work, I mean, can can you do a DNA based on a NEPA that's not been done within your own agency?
Yes. So I came on just to kind of jump in.
So I, I came on just to kind of jump in. Um, we have done that here. With state, so they want to fix a road. Most of it's on, you know, private, but it comes through Forest Service. Uh, they did the SEQA, the state level environmental stuff. Uh, we just kind of review it, agree with what they found and basically signed off. It was like a one pager for us and we got the work done. So we went through the state.
It is nice.
But if, but if you're, so don't get too excited. Here's the SEQA and the NEPA, that's the same, that's like the same, that's the same apple. We're talking about like, oh, here's what they did over here and it, it's going to be just the same way over here. It's a different area. So that is a new authority and I, um, you know, what I can do is maybe bring, uh, Joe Rodarm is our environmental coordinator. He's, he's really, um, he came from BLM. So he knows this authority really well. Um, I can bring him to, to speak to you all about it, what it is and how it works, if that is something the group is interested in.
Maybe, I mean, yeah, I don't see why not.
Drag him along on a field trip.
I mean, I, I would think that it would be helpful, um, just to understand it, if it's something that it's, that if it's a tool in the toolbox that's intended to be utilized. The reason why I asked about that specifically was because obviously like, you know, we're looking at a chunk of Highway three between here and here. What about between here and town? You know, like it's, if we're talking about doing that cookie cutter thing, would that be applicable would be, I guess, my, was, was my thought.
Yeah, no, those are all, those are all good conversations out, Kelly.
Well, let's do that.
Okay, I'll bring, I'll bring Joe either on the field trip or, or to the meeting.
All of them. Just a time check here. We are running a little bit late, uh, beyond our originally, uh, proposed wrap up about twelve forty-five, but we'll, we'll keep pressing on.
Did Nick have anything else?
Yeah, I can get, I've tried to be just quick with other work that's relevant, collaborative, be interested in, you know, the, the monument fire footprint. So from a fuels, you know, fuels and forestry standpoint. Uh, monument fire footprint and the disaster supplemental funding watershed center has some money to basically look at, um, fuel treatment priorities that weren't, you know, already undertaken as immediate sort of post-fire, you know, recovery efforts by the Forest Service. Imagining that focuses on work around the communities that were most threatened or impacted by the fire, where we didn't get to do sort of post-fire hazard tree reduction and, and, uh, and build in the kind of infrastructure we want to have, you know, for future fire management. So we'll basically be looking at options for facilitating, you know, future success of future fire management around the communities in particular. Um, that'll be sort of assessment work, sort of pre-NEPA and then hopefully launching into NEPA planning. That then could be funded by, you know, this large new, you know, award that we're talking about for implementation. It's going to be expensive work because it's, you know, this salvage opportunity. It's a lot of heavy fuels, tough access, but still really important work to happen. So just want folks to know that's going to be sort of launching and we'll be going into the, the communities and actually talking about, you know, what their priorities are and obviously working hand to hand with Forest Service on all that. So monument fire footprint. Um, have some large grant proposals outstanding for work on private lands that really does the stitching together that we're talking about between federal lands, um, uh, community wildfire defense. This new Forest Service program that spans a lot of South Fork country between Six Rivers and Chastity and then really complements more Willow Creek Fire Safe Council's doing that also spans that landscape. So a lot of, lot of work focusing on private lands, that forest health grant that, uh, proposal that, that Xander just mentioned, very focused on private lands and really stitching together with what we know is going to be this large federal investment. Now that we know this large federal investment's happening, we can focus even more heavily, I think, on the private land side of it and, and try to be complimentary. So that's, that's in development.
Was any of that private lands emphasis built into that joint chiefs proposal that's?
Yep.
So you, you've got kind of a template already.
Yep, stuff we've worked on within RCS with the Regional Conservation Partnership Program, Joint Chiefs Prior Awards is all continuing to really build that footprint out. So, um, anyway, just, just everyone be aware, there is a lot that's happening on the private land side too, and collaborative doesn't talk about that a lot, um, uh, happening. I think I'll just leave it at that. On the fuel side, just know, you know, put the program, what we're kind of conversation we're having before, that really is about like operational planning for this field season, future field seizing. That's our cruise capabilities for planning, for implementation, for contracts, subcontracting out to local operators, all of that, that we're really trying to iron out for the next field season and the big new money creates a big impact to how we prioritize that stuff. So that's what we're trying to get at. Um, and I know, you know, Terry's gone, but thinking about Trinity County operators that aren't in existence or interested in being in business, um, and could grow their businesses to scale to this opportunity is a big focus of what we're thinking at, at the watershed center. We're not really thinking, well, how are we going to grow the watershed center to do all this? Really thinking about, with some massive private sector opportunity to rebuild an industry around fire resilience, fuel reduction, timber harvest in our county that we lost twenty-five years ago. Watershed Center and RCD have grown a lot in the meantime. The private sector has continued to shrink.
Can't find a logger if you try to.
And this would be the first opportunity, a real like business signal for them, you know, and so I just can't agree more with Terry and our need to sort of deliberately have a strategy for how we're engaging them. How we're building out the contracting strategy to make opportunities available to them, how they can use that business planning and financing and everything they need to do. There are some, you know, there are opportunities, you know, there are a lot of people who either got out of cannabis or getting out of cannabis or who built small businesses doing just sort of, you know, three acre conversions who have some know-how, have some equipment and have more of a workforce available now, you know, with the crash of the green rush. So this is, it's, I just, anyway. I know this wasn't what my report was supposed to be about, but I just wanted to sort of emphasize like very much front of mind for my team and all, all our teams when we, about where, what are we doing with all this money and how are we going to get this work done? You know, it's, it's a big opportunity. So if any, you want to contribute to that kind of thinking, you know, please reach out. Um, if you think you have something to contribute there. On the recreation side, just real quickly, because there's a bunch of investment going on, completing some of the real, um, enter trails in the Weaver Basin, the sweepstakes trail will be done when it comes off a low gap or below low gap, um, will be done hopefully this spring. The connector trail that rebuilds part of the Grange, the sort of nasty part of the Grange ditch is, should be done this, this field season as well. That's awesome for, obviously Weaverville, Weaver Basin, um, the planning grant for the North Lake, it's here in Nevada Conservancy. It's looking at the lake loop trail as well as several other sort of historic trails and potential trails that could take pressure off of the Alps and create more opportunities, you know, for recreation, you know, and closer to the lake and the communities in particular. So.
Can I, can, uh, can I talk for two minutes on what I, what I feel is the holdup on that trail, you know? That, that we're crossing of, uh, the Caltrans area, you know, and, uh, and it's been talked about that culvert and everything. I don't, I don't care at all about that culvert. I don't want, it's a rocky slope. It's an armored slope. That's what Caltrans is worried about. I don't want to go down that slope or up that slope. I want to get, it's a dangerous thing. It's all rocks. I want to go right across the street to, to make a trail. I'm going to add rocks. I'm not going to take any rocks away. And I want to go, you hit that trail at elevation and go right across that. It's only a hundred feet, a hundred fifty feet we're talking about. I don't want to go up or down. I don't want to. That was proposed by a lot of other people that aren't around now, that aren't trail builders necessarily riders, but, uh, it's a dangerous area and I just want to get right across. And, uh, so I want to stop the, the, uh, putting it one side of the trail and I want to get on Caltrans and, uh, follow all their rules and do everything they want to do, but I don't want them to hold up the trail. I want to build the first mile of trail. And the, uh, and then the rest of it is connecting to an existing trail. It's there, it didn't, that takes to, uh, the launch ramp. And there's another mile the other side of the launch ramp.
Really good idea.
And, uh, and the other mile that I, the other side of the launch ramp is already in. Cause somebody said, hey, Ross, I saw your markers on the thing. I cut your trail in. So it's already there. So even though they're just little patches of trail, they get used by campers constantly and people are going out there to camp. You see them loaded up with all their kids' bikes on the trail because the kids can ride up and down that trail. Nobody advertises that trail. The concessionaire never advertised it, you know, and it's, it's constantly used. You can see the cars go by in the summer with the bikes all, all the kids' bikes on the trail. That's it. That's it for the trail.
And then, and then there's some new trails going in on BLM lands, just, uh, in Hay Fork, around you and reservoir, which I think is just a very cool thing for the community for there. Um, and, and so anyway, lots, lots going on with trails. Um, the two youth crews that will have Weaverville and, and Hay Fork, I think, just know that local high school kids are getting out there and doing a lot of work on the trails along with the sand, you know? So we've got a lot of capacity in the county going towards really good trail work, youth engagement, um, that I think you all should, you know, know about and care about. And, uh, so last thing on sort of a planning, the planning side that I've talked to you all about this land tender software, which is prioritization, alternative analysis, kind of planning and prioritization tool, fuel treatments where in contract and working on sort of populating that geospatial planning tool, we should have it available to us in this sort of group, you know, by, by July. Seems like a long time. It's not that far out. We'll be able to use that really for the next generation of kind of planning projects. I mean, I think the thing someone's recommending, why don't we just look at what it would cost, what it would cost and what it would do to, you know, buffer out all the power lines by another 500 feet? You could just do that exercise in, you know, uh, you know, a half hour with this tool and basically like model out, you know, how much it costs, how much timber would come out, how you would access it. So some cool like ways for us to do just kind of rapid planning exercises that I just want, you know, want folks to know, we're still working on and planning to bring back to the group pretty quickly here. And then just the last thing real quickly, the, um, hasn't been a big topic of conversation in the group, but the land acquisition that the watershed center is working on for the Trinity Headwaters, eleven thousand acres, private, uh, timberland up there. Uh, Senator, uh, Representative Hoffman included $2 million in the interior appropriations bill last year and it made it through the omnibus, the federal omnibus standard years with $2 million secured. Several million more we need, but that's huge because the state actually has most of the rest of the money and us being able to come with a really sizable federal match is a big deal. So. Hope to get darn near to funding and closing on that this, this town.
Awesome. Nick, any questions for Nick?
Was that land tender? Was that full county?
Yeah.
Yep.
Okay. No more questions. I think that wraps up our other items and partner updates, including business. Any public input? Saying none. Facilitation team.
This is just, I guess, generally where if we have anything to report out, we would report out at this point. You are the big news.
So I think I'm good. So.
Sort of to ask on the, you know, we talked about, you know, the idea of sort of restructuring a little bit about how we're going to operate as collaborative group to meet this sort of federal investment moment. And would it be a fair proposal that the facilitation team do some work to sort of make a proposal? I mean, essentially we've tried to sort of do it collectively as the whole collaborative group, and I think that's a challenging exercise for us to like, imagine a new way of sort of operating and doing business. And I think we could do well for like responding to a proposal. Or maybe a couple of options of how we could deal with sort of restructuring, maybe facilitation team could sort of scope that with some members.
Correct, yeah. That'd be, we could definitely team up on that and maybe even some kind of type structure, you know, or a smaller subset of the collaborative like we've got in terms of rec in the, you know, the fuels committee and others. Maybe this is kind of like an operational committee or something, you know, that, uh, be able to kind of engage, you know, with partners in terms of, you know, what, what's going to take for the collaborative to feel like, you know, we're getting in on the front end as Jerry was suggesting. So.
Carol?
Yeah, so I would just suggest, if you're going to change substantially how they operate, you need to coordinate with the board of supervisors because the collaborative is a creature of the board of supervisors. All of our recommendations and stuff are essentially, you know, like the letters we write go through the board. So, um, anyway, I would just suggest, you know, if we're going to start changing how we interact with the agencies, we would want to have the buy-in of the board of supervisors.
Very good. Thank you, Carol.
Larry?
Yeah, I just want to chime in as somebody who's going to be continuing to be a Zoom follower. Very difficult to participate in these hybrid meetings. Uh, the first half of the meeting, the audio was cutting out all the time. During the PowerPoint presentation, we kept losing the picture. Very difficult to ever know who's speaking, uh, in the room there. I would say that we need to put a little time and investment into your tech if we're going to keep trying to do these hybrid meetings.
Agreed.
Thank you, Larry.
My apologies for that. I think a lot of that, um, I'm not going to throw Mike under the bus, but he said that there was, their wifi here is based off of a cellular, uh, data plan and that, um, I think was part of what he was trying to relay to me was that there was issues Verizon wide, which was creating, you know, like we're just trying to stream up and up and down multiple users and all that stuff. So, um, I think a lot of that, a lot of that had to do with, with this. We weren't like on a solid, you know, like standing, you know, infrastructural uh, connection here. So I think that was largely why we were running into those issues, which we haven't really, we were pushing the envelope, I guess, at this point. So I guess we need to. What I would have was beginning to wonder about was, you know, whether or not, you know, if we're going to continue to do hybrid meetings at all. I mean, this, I think was a pretty successful, we had probably almost a twenty-five people in the room today. Um, and then I'll know almost like another twenty on, on Zoom. And I know that makes it easier for certain people that are away to participate, but, um, if, you know, a room that's as well situated as this, uh, is skilled creating problems. The way that I look at it is, you know, it would probably be a substantial investment to actually try to shore up the problems that we're having from a tech end. Um, so it's a matter of whether or not the collaborative wants to continue to do that or get back to what we had before, which was in, in, in-person meetings. You know, and, and sort of try to eliminate that by, by taking it out of the equation.
We're a hundred percent Zoom meetings. Those were always effective.
That's true. The best part of those Zoom meetings is that I get a recording that allows us to do this level of documentation, oh, you know, for, uh, for the minutes. So so I guess that's, that's a, a matter of whether or not, you know, what, what's the pleasure of the collaborative?
Yep.
Well, I think that could just be part of the proposal set the facilitation, one of the options.
One of the options.
Facilitation comes up with for consideration.
I think, I think one of the options is consider, something of consideration is, uh, to have, um, additional meetings. Uh, every two months is a long span.
Right.
Um, particularly since there's a lot happening, not only with the Forest Service, but with these other agencies and sounds like the whole community is going to be gearing up.
Well, we do sort of have, we do sort of have, you know, those third Fridays are pretty much always set aside, whether it's, you know, currently with the odd months for the meetings and
More for the.
For the field tours.
Yes.
Um, whether or not we take the field tours, you know, out and have those as completely separate.
Right.
Uh, you know, and then just sit on that third Friday for meetings monthly, you know, I, I, Jim was mentioning that too, was like, it used to be quarterly and then it was monthly and then it was bimonthly, you know? We, we've kind of done it all in different ways over the ten years, uh, for the sake of need, right? So it, this seems like a period of time where we have a great deal of need to, you know, to be in, in a part of these larger processes that are happening that have a level of expediency that we, you know, want to be a part of. So, you know.
Yeah, and it's already January and, and it sounds like we've only got till, what, September thirty? I don't know that the collaborative has a lot of time, uh, really to, to waste. So I don't know that the collaborative has a lot of time really to, to waste relative to engagement. And, and, and that's just, and that's something we'll kind of pull out as we poll and, and, and reach out to you all. But yeah, I, I think there's a time sensitivity here. Probably necessitates more frequency if, if we want to. Really be engaged on the front end and, and have some impact on what comes out at the other end. Yeah.
So I guess, do you have your hand up still or do you?
No, I'm trying to say something. I would just point out how much more effective meeting out in the field, especially with Tara Jones. Because she's like a rock star, but I mean.
It's true.
We get so much done. We get on the same page with each other. I think trying to do more business on the off month field trips out in the field, I would highly recommend.
Well, that might be a good segue into the February seventeenth. Field trip planning. Is, is there a proposal out already, Kelly, that we know of or is there?
You had talked about something.
Browns, two and three were.
So we had talked about doing that in December and I think it would be helpful to have that again because of how. I mean, to get everybody on the same page about what these treatments, what kind of treatments we want to start looking at, you know, and we've had subset meetings with. And through the, the, you know, the Community Forest Steering Committee. And I mean, we had a, we actually did have. Browns as sort of a basis for one of the field tours earlier in the season last year. But, but that it wasn't, and it wasn't comprehensive in the state, in the, you know, like what we want to, what we were promoting for that December meeting had to do with bringing in BLM. As well as the Forest Service so that we could facilitate more of a wider conversation about what those treatments can look like. When we're talking about green timber harvest sales and. And what people's comfort levels are, and you know, outside of just. You know, the pilot projects prescription, you know, or how do we use the pilot projects prescription. Outside of a linear feature kind of, you know, so. That, that was the intent. So I mean, that's certainly, we can certainly do that if, if we wanted to do that. You know, or if we needed to redirect or if we had other things that Tara might want to look at, you know, I'm, I'm open to whatever.
It's weather dependent. February could be, you know, on red dirt roads could be a washout.
Right. And that was, and that was the issue.
T-shirt weather.
We're meeting on probably snow because that's the way it goes. But. And that's, you know, Browns, we, we did, we had some really good discussions and that's been the direction of these field trips and. You know, to get out in the woods and talk about potential treatments and, and things that we're looking at and get some agreement on follow up treatments and maintenance. And hear the concerns about the fuels that are left afterwards. All of those things are really good discussion. So. I would, you know, something to consider is, and along with what Larry said, and mostly just because I hate being in the office, if we can do more field trips. Because we're going to have to do, you know, hey, we're looking at going and doing stuff here and here and here. And so how can we facilitate. Getting out to, you know, as Ted said, you know, this year we've got pretty much what NEPA do we have? That's ready to go or that includes maintenance and that's kind of some of the areas that we can, that we can go this year to get as many acres accomplished as we can. Because that's really what it's about, right? Spending the money to accomplish the acres that protect the communities and, and. What, what a blessing to have a wet year to get a running start at this particular objective, you know, I'm, I'm just, I hope it continues. But so I would say Browns is a good one. The watershed center has something planned in High and Palm. We certainly scoped something in High and Palm. That might be a good trip. February seventeenth might be a little early for High and Palm, so maybe Browns and then High and Palm in March might be good. And then.
Yeah.
Well, that's what I, so that's one thing is we might need to have more frequent field trips if possible. That, so I'm asking the group because that would be something that would help. Help me, you know, with planning, help me get on the same page with the groups, get, keep you guys involved in the front end, looking at things, see if we're seeing the same things. But that's, that's different. Like Carol said, it's different than what we've been doing. So I'll leave that to you, to you all to see if that works for you. And then. I, I like the idea of being in the same place, the same time with BLM out in the woods or anywhere with anyone in the woods, emphasis in the woods. I, I think that could be, could be really good. Good use of time. And then we could also talk about, we could touch on what Carol's been asking about is what, what do we all kind of have planned in that up north footprint? And show up for the map that's got all the stuff on it. That might be a, a, a good, a good plan.
So that's part of the fire set council meeting, I think. That's what we have planned as a fairly major discussion point is, is pulling up the maps and having a look at, at. At that area specifically to start with, with the intent that we would actually go around to each of the different CWPP divisions of the county. So there's, you know, there's the North Lake area, there's the Middle Trinity, there's Downriver. There's, you know, Hayfork, you know, kind of Hayfork Creek area, South Fork. Trinity and then South County and then have those discussions basically at those meetings and begin to compile that information. You know, just what's planned, what, you know, what kinds of projects there are. And so that's the intent. And that's just, that's next Thursday. So.
So a good product to maybe to, to talk about on that field trip. So that, that would be great.
Yeah, that sounds good to me.
Okay, well, it sounds like we've got a work cut out for us, Kelly.
Yeah.
Back to you. Whoa.
Yeah, well, I appreciate what Ted was saying earlier in that whenever, you know, additional resources show up, there is, there is that initial excitement and then all of a sudden there's that trepidation about, okay. What, what has, what has to fall in place in order to deliver, right? So that, that, that's a big part of the equation here. And so we will do our best to reach out to all of you and, and get some feedback relative to restructuring or, you know, what, what needs to happen here differently. In order to take full advantage of the opportunity we have to engage, you know, with the efforts going forward.
We've had a varying level of commitment from members of the main group. On a lot of our field tours, because so much of them are focused on forest health, that it tends to be. The people that are most connected to the field break work group. So. My thinking is, is that if, you know, I guess it's a matter of a level of engagement also. You know, from the group as a whole. So. You know, we can, we can plan all day long, but it's going to be a matter of like how much everybody wants to bring to it.
Correct.
You know, now that we've kind of, if we're, if, if this is going to be the, the, the vector through which, you know, we're reinvigorating is the, the, the collaborative is, Jerry was mentioning earlier. You know, then that, that's really kind of, it's up to everyone to, to, to buy into that and then, and then, and then be, you know, participants. So.
Well, that'll be the ultimate determinant on the activities.
Right.
Buy in of the community.
That's right.
Just wait and see what you get.
So I'm sorry, I just wanted to ask, you know, the one thing, the way I see this landscape priority and is that it's an opportunity. And I, and I think it's one that it's really important as, as we're all thinking about what, what comes next, what are we going to implement, what are we going to plan for? It's, it's important to me that this investment be a tool to leverage some more security into our future. The reason that there, you know, that we had lost so many employees and that we weren't super engaged is, is, you know, the budgets do this a lot. Appropriations do this a lot and we've been subject to that, those highs and lows and for a long time. And, and honestly, in my career, we haven't added positions like, like we are now. But I think it's important that we leverage this investment to not only secure sustainable funding or. Avenues for, for financing, not, not only for the agency, but for our partners who then can have a plan to stay at a certain level and have that. Because otherwise it's, you know, if, if our task is just go, go spend the money and get as much as soon as you possibly can in four years and then in five years, I'm like, oh, I hope we get a budget. I don't, I don't want any of us to, to go through that. So as we're thinking of these things, you know, how can we leverage this money with our partners so that they can get more grants? So that we can, you know, have, have the treatments that we need sustain our, or increase our capabilities, you know, we're definitely looking to. Not stay the same. We want to do more pace and scale by, by leveraging our local partners. And I really appreciate the fact that you are local partners and the jobs that have been created. In Trinity County by our partners. So it's, there's a couple of things going on, right? Like, so we have to have a good, a good short range and a good long, a good long game. We got to, we got to know that at the end of this, we should be less vulnerable to highs and lows of funding. Does that seem reasonable to the group? So, so I just, that's something I'm trying to think about as I'm trying to work through what could be, what should be. And I just ask the collaborative, kind of have that in the back of your mind, what, what that might look like, if that makes sense what I just said. Okay.
You bet. Thank you.
Okay.
All right, just, just, I think we got agreement on the field trip next month, right? Browns one and two.
If.
If the weather allows.
If the, yeah.
Yeah. And I guess that we should probably have a fallback too, so that we don't lose the time. So if, if the weather doesn't allow for us to get. Is there any other field options or do we just, as you had said, you know, like sit down with some maps and start to like actually look at the landscape and, and just take that. Utilize that time in a different fashion.
You bet. It's on the calendar, so might as well take advantage of it.
Right.
Either way, we could, we could also take a look at some of the fields work we've been doing in the Weaverville community forests, some of the trails work. That's not usually nice and low elevation. You know, we've done some burning out off of. Yeah, right off the highway. So that, that might be an option. But yeah.
In a some gap. Okay, so, sounds good.
Okay, and the proposal for April is High Palm?
Um, yes, if we can't do one in March.
Switching March office meetings.
Okay. Right, all right. Agenda building.
So, well, we have some, some items that came up.
Right.
Potentially talk about the mortality issues across the landscape that as Nick had sort of suggested. I was going to continue probably to follow up with Tim Saxon for a report out he might have for cannabis. Mitigation. Minersville updates. And then maybe a discussion about the, you know, the, the user, the, you know, what it is that the determination and adequacy is. So. So I guess in my mind, there's, we got, we have items and then general reports out and stuff, but then I guess it's going to be a matter of whether we choose to. Have March become also a field tour. So is that something that we want to commit to or should I poll folks or should we see how next month's goes?
Do a poll.
Do a poll.
Do a poll.
And, and we have a much better feel after we see what next month.
Yeah. For sure.
Yeah.
Okay. Sounds good to me. Is there anything else that anybody else can think of?
Other agenda items that anyone would want to.
Any other items?
Let's go home.
Okay, thank you all. Thank you all online for your patience and perseverance here. Apologize for all the technical challenges we've had.
Thanks, everybody.
Thank you all for your.
And people that are here, please grab stuff, take stuff. There's coffee.
Thank you, Kelly, for.
They did Guy Covington and then our guys went out and did car, just a little thing around the, just riding around a few houses in there, but no, we, we need to be getting things. And I'm.